We'll be starting in one moment, please bear with us. Call to order, welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, June the 15th, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Trustees, be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you are recognized to speak. Please only use the chat box to type "hand up." Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. We welcome our guests who are on the line with us this evening, who will be presenting delegations. Opening prayer, given that June is National Indigenous History Month in Canada, we will begin our June meetings with the land acknowledgement. Thank you. Halton, as we know it today-
Is rich in the history and modern traditions-
Of many First Nations and the Métis-
From the lands of the Anishinaabe-
To the Atawandran-
The Haudenosaunee-
And the Métis.
These lands surround you greatly-
Our steeped in indigenous history-
As we gather today-
On these treaty land-
Our Catholic social teachings-
Call us in solidarity-
With our indigenous brothers and sisters-
So honor and respect-
Forward direction-
Lands-
Waters-
Plants-
Animals-
And ancestors-
That walked before us-
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist-
Gifted to us by our Creator God-
We acknowledge and thank-
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation-
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Student Rusty, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, national anthem, and oath of citizenship? I'll start us off with an opening prayer for you to join me in the sign of our faith in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, your word is active and alive, effective and enlivening. It achieves the end for which you send it. Transformed by your word and filled with your spirit, may our words not be empty, but may we imitate you by speaking true words of forgiveness from the heart to those who may sin against us. We ask this in your name, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son. Acting Vice Chair O'Hern Trenata, could you please read motions adopted in camera, item 1.2 only?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The following motion was adopted in camera. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board ratify the attached memorandum of settlement between the board and the Halton Ontario English Catholic Teachers Association, OECTA, occasional teachers to be effective September the 1st, 2019, and to expire August 31st, 2022.
Thank you. And we are moving on to item, there was, information was not received in camera, we weren't able to get to that item. Moving on to approval of the agenda, I would like to add a notice of motion, which will be item number... Move this clip. Item 10.7 is equal leadership opportunities for non-Catholic secondary students. Trustee Guzzo?
I would also like to give a notice of motion.
Could you please state your notice of motion, which will be 10.8?
Thank you, staff data collection.
Staff data... ...collection. Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Seeing that there's none, may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Trustee Agnew?
Moved by trustee Agnew, do we have a seconder?
O'Brien.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien, we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi?
Against.
Trustee Caribella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trenata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
I'm not sure if trustee Rashdi has joined us. Trustee Rashdi?
Yes, Mr. Chair, sorry, I had technical difficulties, but I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy has left, trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion carries. Declaration of conflict of interest, are there any conflicts of interest? Seeing that there are none, we'll go on to presentations. Oh, trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through Mr. Chair. Item 10.2 deals with budget, occasional teacher salaries are mentioned in this report. My wife is an occasional teacher, therefore I will be declaring a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Brien?
I will follow suit, Mr. Chair.
Okay, trustee DeRosa, both on item 10.2. Thank you, presentations, item 4.1, student presentations. Student trustees, please present your report.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'll be talking about the pillar of achieving. For the past couple of weeks, the center applications were put out to choose for them to apply for the position. During that time, we need to understand that everyone can apply to the position, and apply to the position, and achieve. Everyone has the power to achieve it. We made it this far, and we are just a few more weeks to finish, and we can do this. Lastly, I'd like to thank everyone for their cooperative and participation during this last hard couple of months due to COVID-19 and staying as positive as possible. I wish you all a great summer, and hope to stay in touch. Wish you all wellness and safety.
Thank you, trustee Rashdi. As for the pillar of... ...applications has finally concluded, the incoming... Student trustees are working alongside Senate Advice and Solicitors to select from a pool of highly qualified applicants to be a part of their respective school senate. Applicants will be notified in the coming weeks with regards to the status of their application. And before I move on, I'd like to say a few words about my time here at the board. So, over the course of my term, I've had the incredible opportunity to work alongside some truly brilliant and talented talented individuals. It has been nothing short of a learning experience and one I am forever grateful for. Constantly being surrounded by such a positive and supportive team allowed me to push myself further and grow as an individual. The position certainly has opened doors for me, and I have met some great people through my involvement within our schools, the Student Senate, AUSTA ECHO, and of course, the board. From the time I entered our board in 2011 till now, I have developed such a strong sentiment of connection to our HDSB community. It is a place I've called home and will continue to do so for years to come. Finally, I want to say thank you to everyone who helped me and my co-trustees along the way and made this experience so memorable. I'm gonna miss it. Now, off to trustee Kelly.
Thank you so much, trustee Rashdi and trustee Guber, for some amazing remarks. I'll be discussing the final pillar of belonging. The Ontario Student Trustees Association has released two volumes from its latest advocacy project, The Volume of Our Voices. This project aimed to collect student stories on many different themes. The release of volume one was Learning and Living During a Pandemic, which features student stories on their experiences living and learning during the COVID-19 pandemic. And volume two, Negative Space, which features stories submitted by Ontario students on how their race, ethnicity, nationality, or cultural identity has shaped their learning experiences in Ontario's education system. Volume three is still undergoing production and is set to be released in June, as this volume features student stories on gender identity and sexual orientation, and how it has affected their education in Ontario. And for my final remarks, this work in AUSTA ECHO, along with many different previous initiatives in the association, has been a phenomenal experience. This is thanks to my role and position of being a student trustee at Halton Catholic, and to say I'm grateful to have been a student trustee is an understatement for the responsibilities of these roles in the system have granted me the privilege to learn more about the internal workings of our education system, and try to use this knowledge to help uplift student voice by working directly with students, staff, and stakeholders. In building these relationships, I wanted to use my position to prioritize the concerns of students. Unfortunately, there were times that student voice was ignored, even with various students speaking up on topical issues. But to say that there has not been any progress in listening to student voice and taking the necessary steps to address their concerns would not be appropriate or accurate. But to say that these student concerns were always addressed would do injustice to all of the student advocates that I've worked with and whose work and words were unrecognized. This experience has been life-changing, but there is definitely more work that needs to be done in prioritizing student voice. I encourage strong and passionate student advocates to take this role and help represent Halton community and help further this work. I encourage the prospective and personable staff of Halton Catholic to listen to these student voices to help uplift and address their concerns as the primary stakeholders of education. And I encourage all stakeholders and participants of education to incorporate student voices in important conversations. Youth today are the leaders whose voices should have been considered yesterday and the impact that will be felt tomorrow. As pivotal elements of education environments, students have made a powerful impact, and the privilege of having been in this position has opened my eyes to many possibilities of opportunities for students, because we have been the change that we can see today, and I'm very thankful to have had this position. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. On the speakers list, we have trustee O'Brien, followed by trustee Agnew, then trustee Guzzo. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to our three student trustees. I wanted to take this moment to say your has been an absolute gift to all of us. You all come with such individual talents, perspectives, and ways of addressing issues that have not only challenged myself, but have made me much more aware of where our students are right now. I want to wish you all luck in the future, and we hope to see you again soon. Thank you so much for your time, effort, and work.
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo my fellow trustee O'Brien's sentiments. It has been an absolute pleasure working with our three student trustees this year. I continue to be amazed, I don't know why, I'm so shocked every year, but I continue to be amazed at the incredible talent and passion of our student trustees. You have certainly given us so much to think about this year. Your advocacy and your engagement has been commendable, and I respect all of you so much. I wish you nothing but the best. So happy to have gotten to be able to work with you on some initiatives, and the future is bright with you in it. So, good luck in the future, and don't be strangers. We hope to see you around, and thank you again.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. You know, the two trustees ahead of me have pretty much summed it up. Just wanted to say thank you for your voice, thank you for your leadership. Don't ever stop using your voice. That is so important, especially when you're speaking up for those who don't have a voice. It truly is a wonderful gift to have. It's a hard gift to have. It comes with lots of responsibility, but you handled it so amazingly, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and, you know, I hope that you continue to use your voices throughout your careers and your next steps and your next journeys.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to voice the eloquent thanks that has been given by my fellow trustees with the added with the added observation that, you know, we need to acknowledge the courage that it takes to do what our three trustees have done throughout the year through some, you know, some discussions have been certainly animated, but it speaks to their character and their strength and their leadership qualities. So, one big thanks on my behalf, and one word of advice is keep being principled throughout your life, and you will succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Hern Trenata, you have the floor.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. I just really want to echo thank you to our three student trustees. Thanks for keeping us accountable. And really, my big question is, what are you gonna do on Tuesday nights moving forward? You'll have so much more time on your hands, so use it wisely.
Thank you, trustee O'Hern Trenata. Is there any other trustees who'd like to speak? Seeing there's none, I'll just, I'll add my two cents. I'd like to thank you for your participation. I'd like to thank you for your candor. You know, we, it has been a tough year. It's been a tough year for a lot of reasons. I hope to have a final meeting, even if we can't do it as a group individually with you all, to to get an assessment of the role and where we can go in the future, and feedback on how we can all make this board better, because that's really what we want to do, and that's what we're here for. In hindsight, I regret not having spent more time with the student trustees. Maybe, maybe the student trustees don't regret that, because they didn't spend more time with me, but in hindsight, I see that since we weren't around the table, it would have been beneficial if I had reached out and we had more one-on-one conversations. So, for that, I apologize, and I won't make the same mistakes moving forward. But thank you very much for your efforts, your work, your participation. I know you'll all do well and be successful, and congratulations on the time we had here together. Seeing that there's nobody else who likes, would like to speak, we will move on to item 4.2, School Update, Director Daley.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna ask either Andrea or Rosie, oh, thank you, the slides up, and would like to also thank our three student trustees on behalf of our senior staff. Thank you and congratulate you for the role you played this year. I know you're not counting down days, but I want to wish you all the best in the last eight or nine days of school instruction that we have, and hope that your culminating's all go well. It was a real pleasure to get to know you, even if virtually this year. You should be proud of yourself for the role you played, and we're certainly proud of you for being outstanding representatives of our student senate of our board. So, trustees, tonight I bring to you another school's update for this board meeting, and I'm gonna review just fairly quickly what summer programming we have coming up, and then some of the planning we're looking forward to for the 21-22 school year. So, in terms of our summer programming, and this is not new, but we are offering kind of our traditional core summer school programming, secondary school credit program. So, credit bearing courses, credit recovery courses, Reach Ahead summer credits for our students in our system who are moving from grade eight to one of our high schools in grade nine, and then also offering through Thomas Merton, supporting programs for grades six, seven, and eight in literacy and math summer programs, and all of those programs will be conducted virtually, a combination of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. In terms of some of our special summer programming, we are offering a number of programs. The first is a virtual program, which we'll offer for two weeks in July, it's about the 23rd, specific to students with special education needs, and it'll focus on functional literacy and numeracy skills, as well as social skills and getting prepped for our next school year. We'll also offer a one-week summer transition program, which will help our students transition back to school for September. Both of these programs, as well as our traditional credit bearing programs, will be supported by a number of staff from our spec ed department, including our EA's, our BA's, our CDA's, our SLP's, our child and youth counselors, special education teachers, regular classroom teachers, again, both in summer school, in the literacy numeracy programs, Camp Summerland, and our credit earning courses. So, we're very excited to be able to offer that support again, and very hopeful that this will become, all of this will become our regular summer school program. In terms of other supports, we're gonna be able to provide over the summer. We realize or recognize, we've talked about this quite a bit through the year, the importance of mental health and mental wellness for our students and families. So, we are glad we'll be able to continue to support individual students and families throughout the summer months. So, we will be able to support those students who have already been accessing support. We'll be able to also take new referrals for individual support. There's a number of programs that we'll be running, support type programs, both in small group and larger groups. We'll also, if you just go to the next slide, Andrea. Our mental health staff will be able to support our summer school programs throughout the course of July and the programming that we're running in August. We will, in addition to that, offer parent support to help prepare our kids to get back to school. We'll have more programming details coming out at the end of the week, and we're looking forward to solidifying some of the community partnerships that we've developed over the year in order to be able to support our students and families as well. So, again, we're fortunate that we've been able to access some additional funding from the provincial government to support those programs over the summer, and once again, hopefully, these become the norm. This is the way that we're able to fill in some of those gaps and add additional supports throughout the summer months for more and more of our students and their families. In terms of our planning for September of 2021, I'll kind of preface the remarks by saying, our planning is really based on where we're at right now, particularly with our, you know, the current state of our public health. We're hoping that our COVID numbers continue to improve throughout the summer, that more and more staff and students are healthy and able to return to school in a face-to-face environment. So, there may be some changes that we'll need to implement throughout the summer months, but we'll have to wait and see and get a sense of the lay of the land there, both from our own local public health and from the ministries of health and education. So, our goals going into September of 2021, we want to ensure that the health and safety protocols that we currently have in place, we also have in place for September, they may look somewhat different based on the guidance that we receive from those various ministries, but we do want to ensure that our schools are healthy and safe environments for all of our students, staff, visitors, and families. for all of our students, staff, visitors, and families. It'll be important for us to address, to assess and address our student learning gaps that may have developed in the, in the past, I would say, year and a half and to develop plans so we can have appropriate early interventions when needed. We'll continue to provide online learning, but we'll also hopefully hone the skills we've developed this year so that online or remote learning becomes part of our everyday practice in a blended learning format. It can help support in-school instruction and learning. We'll continue to focus on mental health supports for our students and staff, knowing that for some of our students and some of our, our, our CEC staff, they've been, they haven't been physically in school or in the workplace, in some cases for almost a year and a half. And while many people will be excited to get back to school face-to-face, that'll be a big change from where they've been over the past year or even, even the, the past four or five months. We're also going to really work hard on focusing on how we can reengage our school community by reintroducing co-curricular activities, school social events, and continuing, continuing to work on the homeschool parish partnership. And again, I think there's some things we implemented this year that we may want to continue and improve on. Some things I think we'll want to get back to more of a face-to-face environment, but those will be our goals heading into our next school year. So again, we're, we're kind of focusing on five key areas. One, maintaining self-safe and healthy schools. Secondly, re-engaging our Catholic community. Thirdly, meeting the needs of all of our learners, enhancing our online capacity, both from a technical standpoint and a teaching learning perspective. We certainly don't want to lose some of those gains that we made over the past year or year and a half and all wrapped around with supportive mental health and wellbeing for our students, staff, and families. So again, with regards to maintaining self-safe and healthy schools, as we did this year, this will be done in conjunction with Houghton Region Public Health and direction of both the Ministry of Education and the Ministry of Health. We'll continue to maintain well-defined entrance and exit protocols, screening checks, daily health checks as required. We do have a pretty detailed set of health and safety protocols that we implemented this year and were able to put in, I think to great effect because of the willingness of our teachers, our school administrators, and obviously the work of our parents to help out with their sons and daughters and following the protocols we had in place. So we'll make sure that we have those protocols in place for September. As I said, they might look a little bit different depending on what our public health situation is and we'll also try to work our scheduling options, particularly with recess and lunch, to help reduce capacity at schools as well. In terms of our, re-engaging our Catholic school community, we know that both for our students and our parents and for our staff, quite honestly, resumption of extracurricular activities, both athletic and non-athletic, is something that students are really hoping that we can get back to. We're hoping that as well. We know that in the, the phase of the reopening we're currently in in Ontario, that's loosened a little bit, but by the time we're in September, we're really hopeful that we're able to build on some of those virtual activities that we had in place this year. Maybe we'll maintain some of them because I think we found students, staff, and families were able to participate in a number of events that schools and school councils organized virtually and it was a great way to connect and a lot of fun and very convenient, but certainly we want to have those, those in-person opportunities as well. Also working with the diocese, we'll, we'll introduce a return to in-person parish pastor visits to our schools, eucharistic and liturgical celebrations, our sacramental prep as well. Again, that'll be largely determined on, on the public health measures that are in, in place. Some of those new digital skills and, and opportunities we had, in particular for our parishes, to reach out to our students and to be able to virtually visit classes. I think we'll want to maintain some of those and, and even build on them. We'll continue to invite parents and families to join in the prayer and faith life of our activities. And again, the more that we can do, obviously in person, but maybe with that online component. One of the things that we did find out throughout the system this year, for, both for our in-person learners and our remote learners, is our ability to invite people into the learning environment or to have our students visit outside of the classroom in a virtual way that we've really taken advantage of this year that we, we hadn't to, to the extent we did, did in the past. And we'll also look at some structuring, some of those social opportunities for students and families to return to some of those, the ways we used to meet and again, to build on some of the, the activities that we put into place this year. With regards to the instructional part of the day, which is obviously key, we do know that, we do know that some students will have gaps in some of their learning for a variety of reasons. So that's something that we'll need to address early on in the year. We'll continue, I think we got, we made, we made some strides this year on using different forms of assessment, both in our virtual instruction and face-to-face. We did have to develop different ways of assessing student work if the student wasn't right in front of us. And I think that's been very effective. And we'll also, as we mentioned a little bit in some of our summer transition programming, we'll need to keep that in mind as well as we welcome our students back into a face-to-face environment. And again, in addition to those mental health supports that we're going to provide over the summer, we do want to make mental health and wellbeing a core element of our re-entry for students to school. We are working on developing that mental health literacy curriculum that can be offered at the secondary level. We'll continue to collaborate with both our in, our, our, our staff here and our external agencies. We did develop staff wellness committees at each of our sites last year, so we'll continue with that. And we'll continue to support both our senior staff and our staff in the schools with additional PD so that we can best support all of our students. And finally, we, we had lots of, lots of experience this year with remote and online learning. We do need to be prepared going into September to transition, as we did this year, between online and in-person modes of learning, if, if that's required. We had to do it a couple of times this year and I think we did that quite successfully. We learned a lot and we'll continue to provide professional development for our staff so we can get even better at our online capacity from a teaching perspective. We'll continue to review school safety policies around things like digital, digital citizenship, about personal online protection and safety. From an IT perspective, we, we talked about a little bit of this in, in terms of our audit, be looking at how we can both prep, both best protect our own infrastructure and protect our students and families as well. Do ongoing work with all of our staff and our students around cybersecurity and privacies, privacy concerns, and to look at ways that we can enhance our digital instruction and to continue to build capacity both for our students and for our staff across the system. So for our elementary schools, we are hopeful that all of our, or the vast majority of our students return to in-person instruction in September. That being said, we, we had some good success with our virtual school this year, so we will have a virtual school take place, again, a separate virtual Catholic elementary school will take place for our elementary students. We had about 700 parents indicate that their sons and daughters would like to learn in that format. That's our number right now. We'll see if that number changes over the summer. Some parents may opt with additional information to have their kids return to face-to-face instruction. To start off in our, in our in-person instruction, we'll have the same protocols, or at least we're planning for the same protocols that we have in place right now. So students will be co-horted with their classmates and their homeroom teacher. We'll move teachers to classrooms as opposed to classrooms to teachers. We will be able to withdraw students for small group instruction or individualized supports. And how closely that cohorting is necessary or how tightly it's, it's needed, that remains to be seen based on the, on the advice of public health in the ministry. So for our secondary schools, so secondary boards have been directed to plan for 300 minutes of full-time in-person learning for secondary students. So for our students who attending, who are attending, who are attending in-person, they'll be at school every day for a full instructional day. That's our, our plan as it, as it is right now. Currently, the ministry is suggesting to boards or requiring boards to limit schedules to two in-person classes per day. So that's been our starting point and looking at a couple of different scheduling options. We obviously also have to have a bit of a backup plan in, in the event that we have to go fully remote like we did this year. So we'll have that process in place. Or if we have to go back to an adapted timetable, that's some combination of in-person and remote, we'll have those structures in place. But we're hopeful and confident that we'll start September with the majority of our secondary students in school every day for instruction. Now, with the, the sort of limits that the ministry has placed on scheduling so far, we really have a couple of options. So one option is, this year, we, we use the term quad and we would be in that same sort of model where students would do two classes at a time, so two classes spread out over a 10-week period. The difference would be that it would all be for our students who are attending in-person, it would all be in-person, so they wouldn't be leaving in the afternoon for, for a remote portion of the day. Essentially, students would have two large blocks of instruction. One in the morning with breaks built in, one in the afternoon, a, a different class in the afternoon with breaks built in, with a lunch period at some point in the day. So I, I mean, if you, you know, you do the math, we're looking at two 150-minute blocks of instruction in the school day. So for example, a, a grade nine student, they might come in in the morning and their first block of instruction is their grade nine English class, then they have a lunch break, and then the, the second or the afternoon session would be their grade nine math class. So that's very similar to the model that we have this year. Built into this model is also the opportunity for students to learn fully remotely online and we would continue with the hybrid instruction model that we had this year. So that's kind of the option that most boards considered as a starting point. A second option that boards have started to think through is, and this isn't official terminology, but it's, it's kind of the terminology that's arisen, is a modified semester delivery model. So in a modified semester, students would continue to go each day. They would study in a morning session and an afternoon session, but instead of doing two courses at a time, they would do all four courses in the semester at one time. So what that would mean, for example, if we go back to that grade nine student, I would have my period one class in the first block on Monday morning, so my, my grade nine English class. In the afternoon, I would go to my grade nine math class, my period two class. And then there would be a rotation of the schedule where next block, I would go to my period three class, my geography class, and then in the afternoon, my period four class, my religion class. And that would rotate. Now, how that rotation works, it's a number of boards, I've, I've looked at a couple of different models. So in the public board, they've decided to use a modified semester delivery model where students rotate in one week blocks. So a student does their two classes, Monday to Friday, so they do their math and English, Monday to Friday. The next week, they would do science and phys ed for one week and then rotate back to the original two courses. So it's a week of instruction in two courses, a week of instruction in two other courses, and then back to the original two courses. Another alternative would be to change in an alternate day model. So on Monday, I would do a class in the morning and a class in the afternoon, my English and my math. On Tuesday, I would do a class in the morning, a class in the afternoon, my science and my religion. On Wednesday, I would go back to the, the Monday schedule. So day on, day off. A third possible option, which is a bit of a, a, I guess a compromise to the two, would be where students would do two classes for, say, Monday, Tuesday. They'd do their other due classes Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The next week, we would go back, so it, it would alternate kind of on the half week. So two week, two days, then three days, two days, and then three days. I think it's worth noting that for this type of model, the conversations that we've had with public health so far have only been around that week on and week off model. Because the concern both for us and from a public health perspective is, you know, once you go from two classes to four classes, obviously students are not as tightly cohorted anymore. So it really comes down to how much time do you, do we think is, is necessary to safely make those changes and to be able to safely clean the classes. We, at the secondary level, we do that deep clean of our classes every night. So theoretically, we could change over every day or could change over in that two and three-day cycle and make sure the classes are clean for the new group of kids coming in. That's the cleaning schedule that we implemented this year. But we haven't had those other conversations with public health quite yet because that idea of being able to get as close to kind of a semester model as possible is relatively recent. The, obviously the advantages to the, I'd say traditional, we've only done it for a year, but to the quad master model, that option one, is we do have some experience with it. It is predictable. It is a steady schedule. If we have to move to fully remote, it's an easy move because we have experience with it. Where it becomes a little bit problematic, it does present some challenges for us around teacher prep time and some, some aspects of the collective agreement, but I think there's some, some things we can, we can do to mitigate that. It also does tie us into staying in a quad for the whole semester. So if you start with students only studying two classes, you can't jump to four classes. If we do that modified semester delivery where students are starting with all four courses on that rotation, if, say, in October, November, the ministry and public health said, hey, you know what? The situation is safe enough because of increased vaccinations or lower COVID counts that you can go back to a regular semester for 75 minutes, it's easy to make that change. But there's certainly no guarantee that that will happen. So those are some of the questions that we're trying to work through now and those are really the two options that we're investigating. I know certainly parents are, are eager to find where we're going to land. We do want to land so we can let them know and then they can make an informed choice around whether they want their kids to be in school face-to-face or learning remotely. What I can say is that either in What I can say is that either in option one or in option two, for students who are there face-to-face, they're at school every day, they're at school for the full day in two large instructional blocks. Okay, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll finish the last couple of slides and then, I, I know there will be lots of questions. These, these final slides, I think I've shared this information in various reports over the last month or so, but I did want to put them kind of all in one place for trustees to be able to access and then also parents to be able to access. So a couple of reminders. For our students who started in grade nine this year, there is a requirement that they need to complete two online credits before they graduate. The Ministry is considering, and there is an exemption process that hasn't been quite fleshed out yet, but the Ministry is talking about recognizing the amount of remote learning that students have done over the last year, possibly to help satisfy some of those graduation requirements, but they haven't landed on anything yet, so more to, more to follow on that. In terms of some of the other graduation requirements, we know our students didn't partake in the OSSLT this year. Students who graduate, so students who are graduating next year are exempted from the literacy requirement, but students who graduate beginning in 2022, 23 do need to complete the literacy requirement. So EQAO will be providing two administrations of the OSSLT next year, one in the spring, one in the fall. So there will be a window of time, both early in the school year and later in the school year, for students to, to write the OSSLT. In terms of assessment, evaluation, and reporting, boards do have the flexibility in the next school year to determine that final evaluation component of a student's, of a student's mark. I think we've had some great success this year with giving students an opportunity to demonstrate their learning in a lot of different ways that I think is really valuable, both from a, a teaching and learning perspective. Some of the other things to keep in mind for next year. We do know that the new grade nine math curriculum has been released. It'll be put into place in September. So the old course codes, MPM1D, Academic Math, and MFM1P, those won't be offered in September. All students, or, or most students, were studying math in September. The credit that they'll be gaining is MTH1W, that's the new course code. We will continue to offer our locally-developed math course for next year. In terms of next steps, boy, there's a lot of next steps, but, but that's okay. So we've just, those five kind of planning areas that we talked about earlier on in the slides, we've just established or starting to establish those committees to re, establish re-entry plans. Obviously, most of that work, or a lot of that work's going to get done over the summer, but I will be asking trustees for some help on those committees if they, if they do, if they do have some time to be able to offer some input. We'll also be reaching out to parents through a, a couple of our, our, our parent groups and tapping our student trustees and, and our teaching staff as well. The final re-entry plan for school, this is not the final scheduling plan per se, but the final plan, we'll be able to share more information in August. We're anticipating the return-to-school guidance from the Ministry will come either late July or maybe the first week in August. So that'll give us a better idea, certainly, around perhaps some health and safety protocols that we'll need to have in place, or maybe some that we can modify from our existing practice. I think it's unlikely that we'd be told to move to an adapted model for secondary in August, but I guess you never know what's going to happen. So we'll continue to monitor information that we're receiving, both from the Ministry and from Halt and Region, we'll update as we can. But in terms of kind of that final return-to-school planning, it's likely that it won't be until August where all the details will be, will be worked out. We'll continue to update in as many different ways as we can, via social media, communications straight to parents, and on our board website as well. So that's, that's our update for June 15th. And I know that took a little bit of time, but I'm, I'm hopeful that that was helpful and certainly happy to answer any questions, hear any feedback, suggestions that, that trustees would like to offer.
Thank you, Director Daley. On the speakers list, we have Trustee Guzzo, followed by Trustee Agnew, then Trustee Carabella. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Director Daley, I'm looking at elementary, I'm going to start with elementary first. Last year, I know there's a lot of concerns, not only from parents, but from teachers with multiple split grades, especially if there's the need to have to transition from in-person to remote. Can we, can we know what the idea is when we're talking to school principals in their, in their, in their planning on school grades next year?
Sure, and I, I might ask Superintendent Denalfo to talk a little bit more about the elementary staffing model. Certainly, at some schools, splits are a bit of an inevitability based on, on both number of students and, and where the students land. But, but Superintendent Denalfo, maybe you can talk a little bit about some of the direction that we give to schools around their school organizations.
Good evening, sure, Director Daley, I could answer that as best as I can. So, Trustee Guzzo, we're staffing our elementary schools at 25 to 1. So 25 to 1 is the average. But looking at the numbers after the survey, we will be going over that 25 to 1 in order to help schools to staff and not to create as many splits as what you referred to, what happened last year. We have many students returning to our schools, so our numbers are healthy. I reviewed those numbers with schools today, and we are in good position to have more straight grades. Having said that, there's an inevitable number of having split grades, and we have to honor that with our staffing numbers. So we'll continue to work with the schools around that, but know that our numbers are, are really healthy for next year in our virtual environment and in our face-to-face environment. So we're going to continue to do that and plan with the schools for that.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, no, they, um, thank you for that. I think, I understand the, the issue with splits, that, you know, sometimes they are inevitable. But in some of the schools, we saw several splits. And I know I've gotten some emails from concerned parents just because of the chaos it created, especially when we had to go to the remote piece. So that is one of the questions that's been asked. So I appreciate that, that the idea is to try to simplify. And if the numbers are healthy, I guess that will help facilitate it, thank you. I'll, I'll go back in the queue for my next question.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Great, and thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daley, if that's okay. I just wanted to ask a question with respect to the modified quadmaster that you presented first, Director Daley. And I'm just wondering if you could, I think it's probably difficult for parents to, having been used to the quadmaster that we were currently in. If you could maybe walk us through a little bit, even if you will, a day in the life, like what does that day look like? So I understand the, I understand the instructional part, but how does that work from a cohorting perspective, a lunch perspective? How does that work outside of the, the academic piece, if you will?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Great questions, because really what the difference at secondary is going to be next year is we're, we're hoping that all of our students return, or most of our students return to in-person instruction. So now, instead of having, you know, 300 or 400 students in the building on a given day, we're going to have, we're back to, you know, 1,200, 1,400, 1,600 students in the building. So I, I think that's been recognized by the Ministry by saying, for right now, let's look at a max of two classes, so we can limit student interactions. Now, the challenge obviously is, well, that's fine when students are in the classroom, but if you release 1,200 kids to go to lunch at the same time, I mean, first of all, none of our schools have space for 1,200 kids to be on lunch at the same time. That's why we, we have multiple lunch periods. So what we've tried to work into, if we're in that traditional or, or the standard quad model, we'd have four lunches spread throughout the day. So if I'm in my grade nine English class, my lunch might be a little bit earlier than traditional, but we'd essentially have a quarter of the school on lunch at each given time. Again, it's, you know, now instead of 1,000 students, it's 250 students, but at least that's a little bit more manageable. It's obviously the, you know, the, the tricky part is at secondary is students are more, you know, apt to leave the building and, and, you know, those kind of tight confines that we have at elementary, it's more difficult to do. I don't think it's feasible at secondary to say students are going to stay in their classroom for 40 minutes to eat lunch. So in this model, we would have four different 40-minute lunch periods throughout the day. And we've tried to set it up where, you know, while the first one is maybe earlier than a traditional lunch, it's not breakfast. And the last one, while it's later than the traditional lunch period, it's not, you know, dinner. I think also, you know, obviously, the breaks that would be built in to those large chunks of time would give kids the opportunity, you know, maybe have a snack or, or water as well. So we are, I mean, it is one of the things right now that we're concerned about is, you know, when kids leave their classrooms, that's a lot of kids in a common area. You know, in, in, in a best-case scenario, by the time we get to September, it's less of a concern for all of those sorts of reasons we talked about, but it is something that we do have on our radar, so we would spread the lunches out to have smaller groups of students out of class at the same time.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
Trustee Agnew does.
Sorry, Trustee Agnew, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Director Daley, I know that there's a lot of unknowns. And so I do appreciate, I think, again, just for parents to sort of get a visualization of what that might look like if we were to look at that model moving forward, so I appreciate that. The, the other question that I had is with respect to the, the online course requirements. And I do note that you had commented, or there was a note in the slide about how there will be some exemptions that will be made for that, but they haven't been announced yet. Do we anticipate that there will be exceptions for our students with special education needs for that component?
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. You know, Trustee Agnew, when, when the exemption process kind of was first explained, it was, it was really pretty open. There's a process that parents have to follow, but it was, it was really, at least the way it was originally explained, it was pretty open to any student. And exemptions really, or those exceptions are, are not to be denied. There, there's a process to, to kind of submit, and, and we haven't seen that paperwork yet, but to me, it, it looks like it's relatively easy to do.
Okay, great, so we'll wait to see until that comes through, thank you very much.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a math question, and then I'll go into the line again. So in the package, not these slides, but the package that was in the board, on page six of eight, it talks about the exams. For 2021 to 2022, school boards will continue to have flexibility to determine final evaluation for up to 30% of a student's final mark. I think we've spoken about exams before, but I bring it up again with the new school year starting, and some parents have been concerned that their high school students, especially the older grades, have not had exams. With schools starting in September and this models, is there a strong chance we will have exams?
Thank you for the, the question, Trustee Carabella. I don't know if I would say there's a strong chance. It's certainly something that we're, we're talking about, you know, in, in conjunction with our, our curriculum department. I think, I, I think the feedback we've had from schools, and, and obviously, everybody's had different experiences, both students and parents. So it's a little bit depending on, in some ways, who you talk to. But the types of assessments that we've had to do because we were in a different format this year, I would argue many of them have been really authentic types of assessments where students could demonstrate their learning in a way different than kind of a paper-and-pencil test. I do recognize that for, you know, a, a number of our students, a good number of our students who are going to go on to some form of post-secondary education, that, you know, there's still many colleges and universities that use the traditional sort of university or college exam, we probably remember. In some cases, you know, the, you know, the 200 multiple choice. I think those practices are changing somewhat at, at, even at the post-secondary level. But certainly, it's something that we, we are thinking about. You know, I, I do recall back in the dark ages, when I went from high school to university, you know, we had exemptions in, in high school for our exams. I didn't get many, so I had lots of experience writing exams in high school and was still pretty nervous that first time on a university campus when I went with 5,000 other people to go into the gym and write my first exam. What I'm really hopeful for, and I think our students have certainly demonstrated it in the past year and a half, is that their ability to be resilient, to replan, to refocus, like all of those sorts of skills that our students are developing, either because they've had to this year or because it's something we've been working on them, with them, those are the types of skills that are going to help them be successful in those pressure, or that will, not, not solely, but will help them be successful in those situations when they get thrown a bit of a curveball.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up question?
Thank you for that, Director Daley. My follow-up is also math-related to the grade nine math. I noticed that it wasn't mentioned that we are offering the pre-AP and pre-IB for grade nine as well. And when is the date for applying, for a student to apply for pre-AP or pre-IB? Is it, which month should parents look out for that?
That's a good question that I don't have off the top of my head. Maybe Superintendent Cordero, maybe you could, I, I know it's in conjunction with when we start option sheet presentations in the fall. I think our IB and AP info nights are early in the fall, but maybe Superintendent Cordero, I hate to put you on the spot with dates.
Thank you, Director Daley, and through you, Mr. Chair. I can get those dates, but I would need a moment or two. Could it, could someone come back to me in a couple minutes?
Sorry, Anthony, it's, it's usually November or December, that's, that's kind of the ballpark, I think?
Yes, it is. It's throughout the month of November, I don't believe we have any this year in December.
Okay.
Thank you. So we'll, Trustee O'Hern-Turnata is on the speakers list, and she hasn't spoken yet, so we'll move her up, and then after that, we have Trustee Guzzo, then Trustee Agnew. Trustee O'Hern-Turnata, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daley. I just wanted to understand and maybe underline, if we decide as a board to go with the quadmaster, which are the two courses for secondary I'm speaking of, we would have to remain in that model for the entire school year, is that correct?
No, we, we would only have to remain in it for first semester. So if we had the opportunity in second semester in February, where things were safe enough and we were confident enough that we could go back to our traditional 75-minute period of instruction, we could do it for second semester. But if we start September in that model, we're really locked in for first semester.
Perfect, because I, and I, I don't want to speak out of term, but I believe our determinist board is going with the, let's call it the modified quad model, where they're going to do two courses uh model, where they're going to do two courses and then skip every other week. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and they did have some transparency, they did have some pushback, but they continue to decide that that's the best way to go, from my understanding.
Um, yeah, so I think they, they released that plan and, and they got lots of feedback and, um, uh, li- like there, I, I think, and I can't speak on behalf of the public board, but to the model in general, the advantage to it is, or one of the advantages, is that if you had the opportunity, you know, if, if Public Health said in October, hey, it's all good, we can go back to a regular semester, it's easy to do because kids are already in four courses. Um, again, it's almost impossible to predict whether or not we'd be able to do that. Or even if the governments, you know, would say that they're going to allow that a month into the school year when they know different boards are all on different schedules. Very hard, um, hard to predict, to predict that. I, I know that, like, the quad master, it's, it's not ideal, although our students, I mean, from a credit accumulation perspective, uh, did well this year. Um, it's not ideal, it's, it, you know, we've heard clearly from students that, um, you know, things do move quickly. That being said, you know, it's a bit of, we had this argument, or not argument, we had this conversation a little bit last year it, when we talked about one course at a time. Is one course in twenty-three days too fast? Is two courses in forty-five days better? Is four courses in ninety days better? It's, um, you know, it kind of anecdotally, the, the feedback I've seen on, on, um, on the modified uh semester model has, has been, you know, kind of right down in the middle. People have said, hey, it looks like a good idea. People have said, this is really not going to work. I, I, I think that's going to be true maybe of any of the models we propose. It's just, it's just not an ideal situation.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so just to follow up on, uh, Trustee O'Hern Trinata's, uh, question there. So when do we think you, a, a decision then would be based on, um, on what option will be, or delivery mode we'll be looking at for secondary?
Um, I, I think, thanks, uh, Trustee Guzzo. I, I, I think, to be fair to parents, obviously, we want to, we want to have a decision made before we break for the summer. Uh, we are having, um, some further conversations with, uh, with Public Health. Just to see, uh, l- l- like I said, a couple of those options we presented, um, uh, are, are con- really contingent on Public Health saying, we think this is something that makes sense from a health and safety perspective. So we do need to get a little bit more feedback on that. Um, I'll, I'll be honest with you, as a, as kind of a senior staff, I think our starting point was the quad, the traditional one, uh, or the one we kind of used this year, but obviously, with kids in school every day and, and dedicated in-class time, it would be different. I think the pace of learning, although it's still going to be fast, at least most of our kids are there face-to-face every day. I think that'll help. Uh, it's a more predictable routine. Um, but with this modified semester, there is, you know, we're trying to think through if it is, is, you know, is the advantage or the couple of advantages it might have worth, worth going that route? And, and, um, you know, there are a couple of boards who have said to parents, we're going to make the decision when you have all the information you can have in August. I don't think, uh, that's, that's what either our parents or teachers want. Um, so I, I think we're looking at, you know, the next week or so that we're going to have to land on something. To be fair.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up?
I do, Mr. Chair. Um, and then the, the ever-popular question is, is can we start off with locker protocols, um, for our students, uh, both secondary and elementary?
Um, I, I, that's, that's good feedback. I'm, I'm not part of the, uh, the Ops Committee per se. Um, but that's certainly something that, um, that we might be able to land on. Kind of our starting point for, for the protocols is really where we're at right now. Um, and then we'll hopefully be able to make adjustments safely as we work our way through the summer. I, I, you know, kind of right now, all indications point to us being able to offer those sorts of things in a, in a safe way. I mean, if all the students are in the building, you know, is that congregating at lockers going to be the same type of concern? That certainly, I, that, that's a good reminder, reminder for, uh, for us, Trustee Guzzo.
Okay, just a clarifying question there, uh, Mr. Chair?
Sure, please proceed.
Yeah, because we didn't actually have lockers in secondary. We did in elementary, so I just think, i- i- you know, if we're prepared for it at the beginning, it might be easier to plan than trying to then implement it after the fact. Um, because I think, again, so many protocols. So that, that would be great if we can look at the secondary piece. Um, because if we're going to all, all, all kids in school, there won't be that option of only having fifteen in a class where you can have, you know, the desk beside you so that there's room when you're putting your bag underneath. Um, they'll, I'm assuming it'll go back to regular class sizes.
Yeah, fair, fair enough. I, I think the, the concern would be, um, you know, a little bit of that, how do you? I, I mean, it's something we'll have to think through in terms of, you know, in a typical school year, fifteen hundred kids show up to school ten minutes before school starts, and they're shoulder-to-shoulder at their lockers. Uh, we'd have to think about maybe staging the entry to try and spread that out, but um, certainly with, with students back for the full day, uh, as you said, with less physical space in the classrooms, hopefully with introduction of, of more extracurriculars, chances are, kids will be bringing more stuff to school with them, and they'll need a place to secure it.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Uh, you know what? I'm okay, Mr. Chair. I will, um, cede my turn. Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask, uh, questions just about some health protocols then starting in. I understand you're having meetings coming up on that. Um, and I'm wondering if there along the way now, if there's been any sort of indications of what criterias would be followed to determine if masking will continue for grade one to grade twelve? Has there been any discussion about that?
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm sure that's discussions that are ongoing, Trustee Carabella, but that information hasn't been shared with us yet. Um, from a provincial perspective, I think the guide to reopening schools, um, I, I think in, a- and it makes sense, I think, that the province will, I don't want to say wait as long as they can, but certainly they'll have a better sense of what September might look like at the end of July as opposed to at the end of June. So really, um, I, I, I guess if, you know, if we were going back to school tomorrow, um, we would have all the same health and safety protocols in place that we had in September. In September of coming up, they may not be necessary. Um, uh, we're not even sure, a hundred percent sure, um, yet, I think, uh, Public Health and the ministry as well, working on, you know, it comes September, if, if, um, you know, there's a COVID case in the school now, what's the tracing process? Um, you know, knowing that more people will be vaccinated, will that have impact on how kids are sent home or schools closed? Like, th- that's all still to be determined.
Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just surrounding the, um, part of our package here about youth vaccinations. So, um, is there going to be a protocol about that when children come back to school, like respecting the privacy of whether they've been vaccinated or not? Or do you think, um, they will have to somehow make known whether they're vaccinated or not?
Uh, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Trustee Carabella, I, we certainly haven't had any indication for the province that, you know, vaccine passports or that sort of thing will be in place either for, for students or staff. So I really can't comment on that. Uh, we haven't got any indication of that. Um, but I, I, I could see, um, and I'm just surmising here, I mean, if I'm a, um, you know, a student or a staff member that's been fully vaccinated and a student in my class is COVID-positive, and I'm not exhibiting any symptoms, it would kind of make sense to me, and I'm a history graduate, not a medical graduate, would make sense to me that I might not have to send that teacher home to isolate because they're protected in that sense, but, um, the, 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 kind of the answer to your question is I don't have an answer for it at this point.
I, I guess those are maybe these, uh, conversations that will happen going forward, all the different scenarios, like you just mentioned one of them.
Yeah.
Um, and just a follow-up, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Please go ahead.
Okay. Um, just regarding that, um, so we've been having the clinics in our, uh, pop-up clinics in our parking lots, but has there been any speak of, uh, sorry, any speak? Has there been any, uh, indication of those clinics coming into the schools?
Uh, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. We, we did have interest from Public Health. Um, they looked at, um, potentially using a site in Milton uh in the summer, not during, not when students were there. Uh, but I, I, um, maybe I'll ask Superintendent Merrick. Um, I don't know if he can comment on that. Uh, but we haven't had any indication of clinics in the building, I don't think, when, uh, when the schools are open. Maybe Ryan, you can, you can give us a little bit more of that?
Yeah, and through the chair, no, we haven't had any of those conversations at this point. I mean, um, for the most part, when the vaccines have been readily available, we, we haven't been in school, so um, that hasn't been part of the conversation that we've had with, with Public Health over the past several months.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Um, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Just a, uh, maybe just a clarifying question for Director Daly. Um, with respect to how we currently handle vaccine, um, right now, our vaccines, that's all handled through Public Health. Am I correct in that? That two, um, monitors, who's been vaccinated and the requirements as they pertain to participation in schools and, and whatnot? I, I don't know that that's at the school level to require that piece. That would be a public health piece as it currently is. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that's directly correct, Trustee A- Agnew. Our, our role, uh, really this year has been to provide space either for the asymptomatic targeted testing that we did over the last couple of months at school sites, or providing, in, in this case, for the pop-up clinics, I, I think it's, it's literally just the parking lot. So, um, we're just being a, a, a good community member in providing space. We, we don't, you know, um, we don't obviously administer the vaccines. We don't, um, we don't play a role in that. I'm hopeful that, uh, that parents will really seriously, uh, consider for their, their kids ages twelve, twelve and up. Uh, obviously, that's a, a decision that they make um, and that our staff, uh, do as well, both for their own protection and, and for the protection of everybody else. But, um, that's, that's really the extent of our role.
Trustee Agnew, did you have a follow-up?
I did, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Um, and so just one more, um, piece, Director Daly, to clarify. Currently, uh, for our vaccines now, or sorry, so s- sorry, currently, right now, our policy for vaccination, again, that's in line with Public Health. So Public Health would dictate what mandatory vaccines there might be that they're looking at um, for children or whoever that might be. And they set those requirements forward as far as what Public Health um deems necessary or mandatory for vaccines, and then that is relayed to the schools. Like, we don't get involved as far as saying students have to have X, Y, Z. Um, necessarily, that's done through Public Health as far as the actual vaccination piece. Is, am I understanding that correctly as well?
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Director.
Uh, thank you. Trustee Antamasi, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, with regards to the vaccine, uh, it seems to me that the ministry was thinking in general terms, uh, initially about, um, in September, wanting some sort of numbers insofar as who has been vaccinated and who has not. And on that basis, they were going to make decisions on how to move forward. Have we heard anything to that respect? Uh, Secretary Daly?
Uh, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, no, and, and I mean, we certainly wouldn't have that information, um, uh, at, at our level. I know that, you know, the, kind of the reopening plan, um, it has been based on, you know, we're in phase one because sixty percent of the population has, um, received the first dose, and then I think when we get to seventy-five percent, we can move to the next phase and the next phase. I do know that, um, yeah, um, a part of the tricky part, I think, from the ministry's perspective too, is um, in terms of trying to determine, say, how many people, how many education workers um, have been vaccinated, they really only know that if the persons identify themselves as an education worker when they go to get the vaccine. Um, you could go in and, and just get the vaccine and, and, and not indicate where you worked. So, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, um, how they'll be able to monitor that. Um, but, uh, uh, again, I'm sure they have some process in place. Just hasn't been shared with us yet.
Trustee Antamasi, do you have a follow-up?
Follow-up, Chair? Yep, I do. So, um, I thought that, um, the information that we have received publicly is that the concern for the ministry is that forty percent, thirty-five percent, that is unwilling to be vaccinated. And it was their, uh, the impetus was that they wanted to collect that data because they wanted to isolate these people. They didn't want um, those vaccinated mixed in with those that aren't vaccinated. And then we know that there are parents that are refusing their children to be vaccinated, including themselves. So it would seem to me that there should be something coming down, or already some notice been given to the boards from the ministry establishing that do, that we're required to collect that information, especially amongst our teachers.
Uh, there's absolutely been no direction from the ministry for us to collect that personal information from teachers or from, from parents on behalf of students.
Uh, thank you, Director Daly.
Mr. Chair pointed clarification. So is Halton cooperating with the board insofar as disseminating that information of, let's say, you know, um, X percentage of, um, our population is, is, is now, uh, vaccinated?
Uh, do you mean Halton Public Health or Halton Catholic District School Board?
Sorry, Public Health.
Okay, thank, thank you, Trustee Ian Antamasi. I think the only thing that Public Health can, uh, can report on is uh, the number of people who have identified themselves as an education worker that have got the vaccine. So if we've got sixty thousand education workers in Halton and, you know, uh, thirty thousand people have said, I'm an ed worker, you could say, well, fifty percent of people have got vaccinated, but there might be another ten thousand who haven't identified themselves as an education worker or who, who didn't sign up for the vaccination under that, kind of that, that first-in-line, uh, sort of opportunity they had. So, um, I think that's where there might be some disconnect for the province.
Uh, Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
It's okay, uh, uh, Mr. Chair. I'll cede my question.
Okay. Uh, seeing that there are no other questions, uh, thank you, Director Daly, for your very timely and important school updates. We're mo- oh, sorry, Director Daly.
If I could just, uh, ma- maybe one ask, I, I could have of, uh, trustees. I, I know that, uh, you know, kind of the explanation of what the quad would look like and like the modified semester one, um, it wasn't, um, there was no great visual with it. Um, but certainly, if you could, however you want to do, um, provide any feedback, um, back to, uh, to staff through me around your thoughts on it, or, um, you know, people that you've talked to, like, like I said, I, uh, it's, it's almost one of those things where, depending on who you ask, you're either going to get one answer or another. Um, so all we might find out is, it's going to be a split down the middle, but, um, I, I, I think our feeling as a group so far, uh, as a senior staff, is the, kind of that week on, week off. Um, from our perspective, uh, that's a long time in between courses. Um, it, it would be, uh, a little bit problematic. We need to think it through a little bit more. I'd suggest that if we wanted to go to that model, the happy medium might be, you know, that two-day, three-day, so you don't have those large gaps. But those are, those are kind of the questions that we're trying to work through and identify the, the positives and, and the challenges around it. So would appreciate any type of feedback, um, that, that, uh, that you'd like to provide.
Uh, thank you, Director Daly. Uh, we're moving on to delegations. We have four delegations this evening. Uh, our delegates are on the line. I will let you know when to begin. Uh, item five point one, youth vac-
Item 5.1, youth vaccinations. Our first delegation this evening is from Mrs., from, sorry, Ms. Devoe. Please be reminded that you have 10 minutes for your presentation and that you must state a script that is part of tonight's board agenda package. I ask staff to assist me in keeping track of time. At the end of the delegation, there will be an opportunity for trustees to ask questions for clarification purposes. Please begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Can I leave my camera off?
Yes, if you're, if that you're comfortable that way, please.
Okay. So first, I just want to say that I've been listening, so I'm taking into, with regards to the vaccination discussion. So yeah, I realize what the, what the board's role is to some degree. But I'll continue on and I can address it more later. So, dear trustees, so just a note that due to the time limit, I'll be skipping over some parts in this presentation. So hi, my name is Nicole and I'm a parent in the Halton Catholic School Board. My delegation is to make the board aware of concerns regarding the COVID-19 vaccination, particularly for children, and strongly encourage the board to do everything its power not to promote or condone the vaccine, as well as to permit vaccination to occur in the schools or to mandate it. I would like to say that I'm not a doctor, nurse, or public health official, nor do I claim to have educational training in these areas, nor am I claiming to providing health advice to any persons, especially as it pertains to COVID-19. What I am doing here is presenting the voices of doctors who have spoken out. First, I would like to bring your attention to a canadianphysicians.org website, which features the Declaration of Canadian Physicians for Science and Truth. This is an urgent declaration to the Colleges of Physicians and Surgeons from a group of Canadian physicians in response to a statement issued by the Ontario Licensing Body, CPSO, on April 30th. In this statement, the CPSO was forbidding for physicians from questioning or debating any or all of the official measures, measures imposed in response to COVID-19. In addition, it went on to threaten physicians with punishment, investigations, and disciplinary action. The CPSO stated that physicians have a responsibility to not communicate anti-vaccine, anti-masking, anti-distancing, and anti-lockdown statements and/or promoting unsupported, unproven treatments for COVID-19. The physicians declared that the statement orders us to violate our duty and pledge to our patients. One of these, violation of duty of, of informed consent, is particularly egregious as under the Nuremberg Code, any type of medical intervention is forbidden without informed consent. As the physicians point out, this statement by the CPSO is an assault on free speech and scientific inquiry and that any such order to go against their conscience and pledge to their patients itself may constitute a karma against humanity. I'm going to skip over the whole section regarding the Cormendorstan Review regarding the false with PCR tests, including the issue of cycle threshold and false positives. Considering this information, let's take a look at the risk of COVID-19 in children. As of June 14th in Canada, the reported cases of COVID-19 in people less than 20 years amounts to 19% of total cases. We look at the hospitalizations, the 0 to 19 years is sitting at 1.8% of the total with over 1,250 hospitalizations. There were 11 deaths reported as due to COVID-19 in the 0 to 19 years group, representing 0.0% of total deaths. In Ontario, as of March 25th, one COVID-19 death was reported in children compared to over 7,000 deaths in adults. As comparison with the government of Canada's Flew Watch annual report for the 2018, 2019 influenza season, there were, was a total of 1,300 pediatric, less than 70 years old, hospitalizations. Out of these hospitalizations, there are 271 ICU admissions and 10 deaths. An article from the Lancet Child and Adolescent Health published in March this year is titled, "Children and Young People Remain at Low Risk of COVID-19 Mortality Based on Analysis Across Seven Countries." If children are generally at very minimal risk from COVID-19 compared to the rest of the population and about comparable to the flu, doesn't necessitate an aggressive push with the COVID-19 vaccine. If proper informed consent is to be given, it is critical to understand the other side. That is the concerns and risks with the vaccines. Number one, these vaccines have not been demonstrated to stop infection or prevent transmission. Two, there are no long-term safety studies and these products are still experimental. They are only granted interim emergency use authorization. Since Phase 3 studies will not be completed until 2022 and 2023. Three, the mRNA vaccines contain ingredients that are of concern. This includes polyethylene glycol, which is associated with hypersensitivity reactions and anaphylaxis. Also, while the mRNA vaccines do not use abortion-derived fetal cell lines in the production of the vaccine, like the Johnson-Johnson vaccine, they were used early in the development to test for the efficacy. Though not an ingredient, the spike protein that is created in the body as a result of the mRNA coding instructions is being shown irresponsible for the cardiovascular and blood clotting reactions that are occurring. A study published in Circulation Research shows that the S spike glycoprotein alone can damage vascular endothelial cells by down-regulating ACE2 and consequently inhibiting mitochondrial function. Four, previous attempts to make similar vaccines have failed. In one study, vaccinated infants got much sicker than the unvaccinated infants when exposed to the respiratory sense, teal virus naturally, with 80% of the vaccinated infants, infants requiring hospitalization. Two died. This is called antibody-dependent enhancement. Five, vaccine makers are immune from liability. They cannot be sued if their product causes injury or death as the Canadian government has granted indemnity. Recently, the Canadian government began accepting applications for federal vaccine injury compensation program. But even some people who have been diagnosed with serious conditions after their injection are saying that this compensation doesn't go far enough. Who's actually liable for injuries and death from these products? It would appear that's you and me, the taxpayers. The effect six, the effectiveness of these vaccines was published based on relative risk reduction and not absolute risk reduction. Using the ARR values suggests lower efficacy than what is reported using RRR values. As stated in a Lancet micro paper, although the RRR considers only participants who could benefit from the vaccine, the absolute risk reduction, which is the difference between attack rates with and without a vaccine, considers the whole population. ARR's tend to be ignored because they give a much less impressive effect size than RRRs. Seven, the extent of serious adverse vaccine reactions and these reactions are underreported. As of May 28th, the U.S. Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System shows over 350,000 adverse reactions, including almost 4,000 permanent disabilities and over 5,000 deaths, with seven of those deaths in children under 17 years and under. The 2011 Harvard's report stated that fewer than 1% of all vaccine adverse events are reported to the government. In the U.S., there's a recent study indicating that seven U.S. teens developed heart inflammation after the second Pfizer vaccine. Regarding reported cases of heart inflammation, myocarditis, pericarditis, on the VARI site between December 14th and May 28th, out of a total of 628 cases, 40 cases occurred in children ages 12 to 17, all were attributed to Pfizer's vaccine. Connecticut alone, there were 18 reports of heart problems among teens who had received the vaccine, all resulting in hospitalization. Many doctors have expressed either very serious concern or outright calls not to use the vaccine in children. As a joint letter signed by 93 Israeli doctors state, "We believe that not even a handful of children should be endangered through mass vaccination against a disease that is not dangerous to them. Furthermore, it cannot be ruled out that vaccine will have long-term adverse effects that have not yet been discovered at this time, including on growth, reproductive system, or fertility." An open letter by more than 40 UK doctors states that healthy children are at almost no risk from COVID-19 with risk of death as low as 1 in 2.5 million. We should be concerned that potential risks may outweigh the benefits. Considering the risks and benefits of vaccines in any population is important to recognize that informed consent is essential to decision-making and is one of the mandates of the Colleges of Physicians and Surgeons in Canada. As it states, "In order for consent to be valid, it must meet several criteria, such as that it should be informed, given voluntarily, and not under duress, and must ensure there has been no coercion. Note that the issue of informed consent is a primary tenant of the Nuremberg Code, as mentioned earlier. As a vaccine program has been ruled out to the 12 and up age group in recent weeks, pop-up vaccine clinics have been enticing these children to go get the shot with promises of ice cream, burgers, music, DJs, and other treats. This is an ethical issue as this could be considered coercion and thus in violation of the CPSO mandate and Nuremberg Code." Furthermore, the advertisements for many of these clinics indicate that kids do not need a health card and that parental consent is not required. The issue of moving, of removal of parental consent is being presented as accepted within the Ontario Healthcare Consent Act, which does not indicate a minimum age for minor to verified consent for vaccination. Children as young as 12 need parental permission for ear piercing, a field trip, and just about everything else. Yet it is somehow acceptable for them to be injected with an experimental technology without the consent of a parent or guardian. It is really reasonable, is it really reasonable to consider that teens and children will both receive and are capable of informed consent as it relates to the COVID-19 vaccine? That they can fully understand all the risks and benefits of the injection? Therefore, I urge the board to, within the scope of its power, not to promote or advertise the vaccine to children, nor to allow vaccination to schools or mandate this for school entry. And I just want to make one last note is that part of my agenda for tomorrow is actually to contact Halton Public Health and see if I can pass, you know, have a discussion with them, pass on this information. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Devoe. Trustees, do we have any questions for clarification purposes? Trustee Caribella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Devoe, for your presentation. I did want to ask you, do you find, I don't know if your child has been doing in, well, I guess they have been doing remote for the last little while. Have you noticed any promotion to the children about being vaccinated?
You mean like for my, my daughter's teacher?
That's right. Like you're, you're saying that you, you urge HCDSB to not promote or advertise COVID-19 vaccination. I'm just wondering if that's sort of like in the future or if you've noticed something now.
Yeah, no, I haven't, I haven't through my, my child's teacher at all.
Okay.
Yeah, that hasn't been an issue so far.
Okay, great.
Trustee, Trustee Caribella, you have a follow up?
The follow up would be about the consent. So you say that it's advertised that children can override their parents' consent or don't need their parents' consent?
That, that's correct. Yeah, for the 12. Sorry?
Can you explain like where you, when you say it's advertised, like where is that information?
That's, well, you can go, I mean, even you can go to the, I believe even the Halton site and any of the advertisements for these, these clinics. That's, yeah, they don't, they don't need parental consent to, it's under the, so because of the health, whatever, the Ontario Healthcare Consent Act, they don't technically need consent even for, yeah. So, yeah, even like, as I recall, even on the Halton Public Health site, it, it does state that they don't require parental consent to get the vaccine.
Trustees, do we have any other questions, any terrifying questions? Seeing that there are none, I'll, I thank you, Ms. Devoe. And a response to your delegation will be dealt with under Agenda Item 8.1.
Okay, thank you.
Up next, we have Item 5.2, Student Experiences with Racism. The next delegation is from Ms. Asanti Tutu and Ms. Chua. You have 10 minutes for your presentation also. Please begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Janice Tutu.
And my name is Ariana Chua, and we're both grade nine students from St. Francis Xavier Catholic Secondary School.
We are here to talk about the issue of racism amongst the school board and how we can resolve the issue so that people of color see more welcome within the school board.
We will be discussing the following and we'll take questions at the end. Racism within the school board, the lack of education on racism, and the school resource officer program, and how that affected many students within schools.
Racism has been an issue in history for centuries. And so it's rather upsetting that it's still relevant in our school boards. Along with the fact that the short Black History Month lessons that students receive every February are not enough as they only highlight black struggles and rarely mention black contributions to our society and achievements but made by those in the black community. It is sad that I have to say that I do have a racist experience that occurred in a school setting. In grade five, my class was advised to create fake news posters as a project. They're all to be posted onto a board and put on display. Three boys within my class had decided it was humorous to walk me over to this board without telling me why. They pointed to one of the fake posters that said Niagara Falls, we're freezing over. The boys then proceeded to replace the word Niagara with the N-word, which if you do not know, is a slur used to oppress black people. They had said this over and over again while laughing. Not only was I offended that they decided to say this to me, but offended that they dared to show their racist jokes to the only black girl in their class, thinking that I'd laugh along. I had gone to my teacher about this issue, but I was told that he would deal with it later, and he never did. The issue was later resolved when my counselor, the issue was later resolved when my counselor, who had gone to the school about the issue, when my counselor had gone to the school about this issue and the, and the school suspended the three boys. When they were back from their suspensions, they had gotten mad at me for telling on them and falsely claimed that they had never said anything racist to me.
The lack of staff knowledge and education about racism in the HDSB school board is appalling. I have been in a predominantly white HDSB school board all my life. Growing up was not easy. My peers bullied me for my Asian heritage when I was young. They mocked and teased me for my features and the things I brought to school. And I hated myself, but not to be socially outcasted, I played along. I tried so hard to whitewash myself just to fit in and to make my peers like me. I pushed away my culture entirely, hating every single thing about it. And over the years, I grew to hate myself more and more. Since I was the only, since I was one of the only Asian females in my grade, standards and stereotypes were forced upon me. I wasn't the skinny, short Asian girl people wanted. I was very medium. I wasn't the 5'1" animated girl everyone desired. This caused me to have self, self-image problems and that added to my self-hatred. The teachers in my school saw this all go down, but they didn't care. No one did. I tried so hard to be loved by others that it caused me to hate myself. During this time, my older, my older brother was studying his grade nine year at St. Francis Xavier. The first semester of his junior year, he was excited and ready to take on the world, but his teacher destroyed all of that. While they were taking attendance, my brother was called and his teacher proceeded to mock our Chinese last name, Chua. He laughed at it and called my brother Chu Chu with a mocking Chinese accent for the rest of the semester. My brother laughed it off, not wanting to make a fuss about it, but the kids started to copy the teacher and his nickname for all of grade nine was Chu Chu. Some kids didn't even bother to learn his first name. He is now in his first year of medical school, going on to his second, but this still haunts him. This incident was teacher started and it breaks my heart that my brother had to go through that. Be it resolved that, anti-racism training be mandated for all teachers, administrators, staff, and students to be completed annually with the training that is already provided. Uneducated teachers may add to the problem, and if they can't point out what's right and what's wrong, with access training, teachers and administrators will help them create safer spaces for students of color.
I think either my screen is frozen. Okay. I believe that teachers should have anti-black, Asian, Pacific Islander, South American, and Indigenous racism in their curriculum plan. And that they, and that they should teach students not to use oppressive slurs alongside the usual, usual teachings of oppression among colored minorities. This can make a difference and most likely prevent another black student from being targeted like I was in grade five. Another issue that has affected the colored students within the school are the Student Resource Officers, SRO. Be it further resolved that, the School Resource Officer, SRO, program, be reviewed to determine whether or not the school program has fulfilled this mandate before the 2021 to 2022 school year.
Students at our school feel uncomfortable and intimidated by the police station at our school, mostly due to the turmoil between minority groups and the police forces.
My screen keeps glitching. Okay. My screen keeps glitching. I, okay. For example, we questioned a grade twelve student within our school about this situation. They told us, they glanced at me, and then I looked the other way, because I don't know what they'd say or do. I have to be cautious. When, when asked how they'd like this issue of intimidation among police officers to be resolved, the student answered, "I think they should be present, but try not to intimidate students."
In H C D S B schools, many feel intimidated, especially racialized students who are disproportionately much more questioned by the school officers and targeted by them, even just the simple act of going to the bathroom.
Not want to abolish the S R O program. Students want educated police officers around their school so they can feel safe and un-intimidated. Further be resolved that, by the start of the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two school year, H C D S B will provide accessible resources on its online platforms regarding preventing and responding to discrimination specific to racism, homophobia, and transphobia in educate, in an educational environment. Children are very impressionable. They tend to mimic the actions of those around them, which makes a big impact on their mindset and the way they treat others.
With the lack of proper education on important subjects, they may grow up to be misinformed and do harm to our communities. By educating all children about these topics at a young age, it will help them learn about their peers and how to be a good ally.
We are here asking for your help to make sure that equality within the school board is maintained.
And for a more inclusive curriculum with their zero discrimination.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you for your presentation. Uh, we'll open up the floor to questions from trustees. Trustees, are there any uh, clarifying questions you have? Uh, trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and thank you uh, both for for coming forward with this. I know this isn't something easy to talk about um, and 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 to put yourself out there with. Just out of curiosity, um, when this has happened in the past, has has there been any other supports for you to reach out to? I know you said that um, I can't remember who mentioned it now because the the presentation is gone, but um, that it was reported to a teacher and it hadn't, it it never got addressed. Is there any other avenue for you to reach out to that you know of in your schools when something like this happens?
Well, normally, uh, right now, as we are in grade nine, we um, have not been able to um, really reach out to our counselor. We haven't, from what me, both me and Ari know, we haven't faced any issues currently. Um, but at the time, no, there were no other resources for me, only that one counselor and my teacher. Um, we are not allowed outside of the classroom, and I had asked to go to the bathroom because I felt unsafe after those students had done that to me, and instead, I led myself to go to that counselor instead.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow up?
Uh, no, I I think the other student might have had something to add to that, uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Chua, did you have some context to add?
Um, to answer your question, personally for me, because I'm I'm glad that Jane got help from her counselor, even though um, her teacher should have done done something um, in the first place. Um, personally, for both me and my brother's experience, from what I know from him, um, we didn't exactly have anyone to reach out to, um, because it, at, as in the time uh, that it was happening, there was not much um, resources for us, and there was not much um, like, there was no, not much help that we could have gotten, and um, I hope that kids now uh, can get help uh, when they need it.
Uh, thank you, trustees. Do we have any other questions? Uh, seeing that there's none, I I thank you very much for your your presentation. It's always so important to hear about your lived experience to help inform us, and we really appreciate you coming forward. It's, I and I can imagine it, it's not an easy thing to do. Uh, your, a response to your delegation will be dealt with under Agenda Item eight point one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item five point three, Indigenous Equity and Human Rights Roadmap. Uh, next, we have Ms. Black and uh, Ms., oh, Ms. Dezuza is unable to join us, and Ms. Greaves. Uh, you will also have ten minutes. Please begin.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Jennifer Black. I'm a grade eleven student at Corpus Christi, and as an Asian and white student who has attended H C D S B schools since the first grade, I can unfortunately confirm that I have faced blatant racism within these schools since childhood. Though I personally have a pale complexion, I am of Indonesian background, and my family and most other Indonesians typically have fairly darker skin tones. I remember one day when I was in the second grade, and a classmate turned around to me and told me that I was fat, brown, and ugly. In fourth grade, I was regularly compared to a sumo wrestler due to my background and weight. In the sixth grade, I was called two homophobic slurs by a different student, and he did so for two years. In ninth, another would consistently refer to me as Chinese as if it were my name. Another would ask me how often I eat dogs. These are only a few instances of discrimination and racism I have experienced within these schools and have never forgotten. How can H C D S B claim dignity, equity, respect, and inclusivity when there is little effort to actually do anything about the existing injustices and intolerances? Bigotry is observed and so does learned, and children like me are left to suffer for it. Providing resources that insist on anti-discrimination and anti-racism are critical to unlearning this persistent cycle of hatred. There is no neutrality in situations of injustice. Teaching neutrality teaches students to be silent and therefore complicit in oppressive structures. This is damaging for many students, myself included. Being specifically anti-bigotry ensures effective change in racial equity. Regular school practices such as streaming in the School Resources Officer Program perpetuate and greatly contribute to systemic racism. Streaming disproportionately sends racialized students into apply-level courses very early on and limits their future prospects, pushing them into the cycle of inequitable opportunities that manifest in future socioeconomic injustice. The recent turnover of streaming in the grade nine math curriculum beginning as soon as the upcoming school year was a great victory, but a long overdue contribution to breaking down racism within schools. Education Minister Stephen Leche stated, "The world has changed, the economy has changed, the job market has changed, and so should the curriculum that informs and inspires your child, and that eradicating unnecessary division amongst students and adjusting the curriculum to current times creates an environment stimulating greater chances of success for children." Racism is a system, is a system of oppression. This includes a system of streaming, which must be reviewed at the board level. These racialized students streamed into apply-level courses have their future and opportunities limited before they even start high school. Having armed police officers also directly targets minority groups to negative impacts. Many minorities are often uncomfortable with police, and having them in schools amongst racialized children insists on an untrusting and inequitable environment. Many students are vocal about the lack of anti-racism, anti-oppressive approaches in schools, and if there are initiatives initiatives in place, many students are unaware of the internal happenings of the board. This is why many students have joined the Student-Led Equity Group of H C D S B. Students in this group use their voice to create a video resource on Black Lives Matter and its importance in Canada and in our board. This resource has been shared with all principals in secondary, in secondary schools of our board and with our Human Rights and Equity Senior Manager. The student-led group has also created many anti-racism resources, including slides and presentations that students have shared with secondary school teachers and can be used in the future. All of these resources were made by students a part of this group in their own free time and expect no reward other than the reward of sharing education. It is important that H C D S B shares resources readily available and available to the student body, sorry, accessible and available to the student body, as the outreach of staff will be broader and more impactful and will help in taking the crucial steps of unlearning racism beginning in education. We also need active input from diverse groups of students. Being a minority should not equal being ignored and voiceless within our school community, including the voices of marginalized students and teachers in creating motions and making decisions at the board is crucial in ensuring that their voices are heard and individual needs are met. It is important that we are not speaking on behalf of these students, but instead allowing them to share their perspectives. Having these representative voices greatly helps to ensure more accurate information about what radical racialized students in our school communities truly need. Although systemic racism exists, the approach of an anti-racist lens is also a system that exists, and this is an approach that Halton Catholic must take. It is a system in which policies, rules, and procedures are created to promote racial equity. With anti-racism, we generate anti-racist thoughts and ideas in order to uplift the unique individuality of black, indigenous, and people of color. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, um, trustees. Do we have any clarification questions? I'll call one more time. Trustees, do we have any questions? Trustee Guzzo?
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just, I just have to ask that that committee that you you participated in, can you, can you just um, go back and explain to me who participates in that?
Um, I am not a part of the group myself, but I le, I believe um, Jane, who previously delegated, was a part of it, um, as well as Leah Greaves and Dakota Dezuza. And I did help to create the Black Lives Matter video, but that is all.
Okay, thank you so much. I just have to say, thank you so much for sharing and for your presentation. It, you know, it's amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't see any other questions. Uh, thank you. Thank you for coming in and sharing with us, and and again, sharing your your lived experience is very important for us to to inform our decision-making, and um, it takes, obviously takes courage uh, to come forward and and tell, recant those stories. So thank you very much. A response to the delegation will be dealt with under Agenda Item eight point one. Moving on to item five point four, Importance of Student Voice. Next, we have Ms. Barakat. Uh, you will have ten minutes. Please begin when you're ready.
Hello, my name is Rahad Barakat, and today I will be delegating on the importance of student voice and how we could do better as a board to hear it. Although there are many opportunities for students to voice their concerns, they are often not heard or shut down. The issue is that students are being given a space to speak but have not been heard. One example I have witnessed at the board level is invalid comments during the question period at student delegations. Some questions become long-winded arguments, such as delegations about pride, and other comments, such as ones brought up at my previous delegation about Policy one twenty-six. One being that it is a requirement in Catholic boards to be, um, it is a provincial rea, sorry, a provincial requirement in all Catholic boards to be Catholic to run for student trustee. This, this is in fact false, as Huron Catholic District School Board, District School Board and Sudbury Catholic District School Board do not have this requirement, and set a precedent for allowing non-Catholics to run in Catholic boards. After my own experience delegating and many of my peers delegating, I have noticed that there is fear surround surrounding doing this. It is not a safe or welcoming environment to delegate because of the types of comments that students have heard after delegations. One comment that stood out to many people watching the second delegation about flying the pride flag was after a student presenter had said, quote, "The words gender, gender and sexual orientation are part of our diversity, and as Jesus taught us, it is important to love and respect all diversities," end quote. One of the questions posed afterwards was, quote, "Can you please point out where in scripture it says that? I don't recall seeing it, the words diversity or diversities," end quote. This rhetorical question sparked outrage with students watching the delegation. It sent a disheartening message to not only LGBTQ plus members, but also any minorities in the school board, such as myself. It says that be, uh, to say that because scripture does not say the word diversity or diversities, the point that Jesus taught us to respect all, everybody's diversity is invalid, is daunting. Although the intent behind the comment may not have been to insinuate that, it is the effect and message sent to the student body. It is important, as trustees that represent the board, to be mindful of your words to us students, because it is easy for the wrong message to be sent to the community. Comments and questions like these often cause young leaders in the board to give up on having their issues and voices heard at the board level. Elementary students, secondary students, student council presidents, student senate, and student alumni of H C D S B have become much more vocal this year. More students have attended board meetings, came to, attended board meetings, to delegations. They have sent their email correspondences, started discussions and conversations on important matters in the school system. Despite their advocacy, despite using their voices to the best of their ability, it has been discarded and disregarded. This has been proven with the Board of Trustees' decision on not flying the pride flag, which has include, has included many student voices and was a conversation started by student delegation. This includes the Board of Trustees' lack of consideration or conversation on amendment amendments of Policy one twenty-six and including non-Catholic students in leadership positions, which many students have supported, both Catholic and non-Catholic, and was even back to the letter of correspondence sent by Student Senate. This includes the Board of Trustees' decision in deciding not to reconsider this policy to better incorporate the voices of non-Catholic students, who are a large portion of our board. This action, or lack thereof, speaks volumes on the Board, Board of Trustees' ignorance of student voice, even the elected student trustee trying their best to address these student concerns. Seeing that the year is coming to an end, I want to bring these points to the board as as a point to reflect on and improve on next year to ensure that students that have been given a platform at this board are also being heard and listened to. After all, we are all members of the school board. Without students, there would be no teachers, no administration, administrators, no superintendents, and no trustees. In the future, the board must consider student voices with tangible and powerful action that demonstrates that they want to incorporate student voices by fostering more dialogue in and out of delegation that are rooted in dignity, equity, and respect.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Trustees, do we have any questions? I'll ask one more time. Trustees, do we have any questions? Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, I I just have a question in regards to um, policy, your recommended um, action to the policy in regards to allowing non-student trustees to run. You said students were upset. Can, can you just elaborate a little bit more on on what, what you were hearing in the schools?
Um, within my own school, there was a lot of uh, disheartened students, as it is a majority non-Catholic school. I know students that came here to delegate on the same issue. I know students that signed petitions. I know students that reached out to administrators years prior to try and ask, "How come they are not able to run for student trustees, even if their marks are great, even if they're in ten-plus extracurriculars, even if they are leadership roles, even if they are volunteer hours?" And the answer that we have gotten repeatedly is because of our religion, which is strange, because we are shaped by this system. It, students are honestly, they have reached a point where they don't understand how to strengthen their voices. We as students have done all we can. It is time for us as young people to learn that sometimes if we don't agree with the people in power, we have every right to come here and voice our opinions. And if we aren't listened to, we'll do it again. Because we're voting next year. What kind of message are we sending to young people if we're saying that if you disagree with people in power, then your opinion does not matter?
Thank you.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. So, so I guess, knowing that the outcome was, you know, obviously, the outcome, it's, it's tonight. It's being voted on tonight. That policy's on the agenda tonight. And there was no change put forward to it for non-Catholic student trustees. So you would say that that was one of the things that we didn't listen to, and it's not reflective of what our student body is?
Yes, it is not reflective of our student body, and this is clear because it was taken to Student Senate, which is a clear reflection of the student body, and it was passed in all schools except one, which was on the fence. That tells you something about what our student body thinks of that policy.
Thank you. Sorry, trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you very much and through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again so much for coming and speaking with us tonight. I feel frustrated for you, but I'm really proud that yourself, that you and your fellow students continue to kick the can, if you will, and continue to come forward and, and, and address these issues and speak up, because nothing changes without that. So, which leads me into my question, and I know that you have done so much. What can we be doing? What actions can we take as trustees to ensure that you are listened to? And not just heard, but actually listened to? You know, what can we be doing to ensure that that student voice is actually being addressed and not being dismissed? Because it sounds like the way it's going right now is not working, and it's creating more and more frustrations, and there's more and more issues that are coming forward. And, you know, I genuinely don't want to, I don't want to waste your precious energy and your precious time. You guys have so much on your plate, and you do so much all the time. And to take the time out to, to speak up about what's important to you, we need to find a way to listen to that and to make sure we act on that, and it just can't be dismissed. So what advice do you have for us? What can we be doing differently so that this is not you yelling into a void, yourself and your fellow students yelling into a void?
I'm so glad you brought that up. There are a couple of things that I believe that you as trustees, as board members, can do to kind of elevate student voice. The first one I would suggest is attending equity workshops about allyship, about listening and creating positive dialogue, dialogue with other people. This is something I had to undergo. I run a social equity group within my school, and I will be running, I will be co-running the student-led board-wide equity group next year. It's one thing that you could do as people in power is realize that you are in power, but your decisions affect students. So sometimes you need to put your own personal opinions aside and realize what is best for students. And usually, what's best for students is what, as you mentioned, we're yelling into a void. That is what we believe is best for ourselves. I think something that happens a lot is that we are dismissed, maybe because of our age, that we don't know better, but we, we do. We are the ones walking the hallways. We are the ones experiencing our education. We are very aware of what affects us, hyper-aware even. Some workshops that trustees can take in Representation Matters, which is the equity group in St. Francis Xavier, we have created workshops for child youth counselors and teachers and staff and students. And these workshops have gotten 400 students on call at once. They are very successful, and it is a very educational experience. I'm sure there are more resources that will come out of the student-led board-wide equity group that you should also be paying attention to. But whether it's getting training or coming to those workshops, it's important that we as leaders, I am included in this, work hard to educate ourselves to make sure that when we are talking, we are able to be held accountable for what we say. Because it is very easy as leaders to have words misunderstood. You know, intent versus action. I, I may mean to say something, but people will understand it as something else. And that's something we have to be cognizant of as leaders.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
I do. Thank you very much. So my fault, and I, I agree, you know, what comes to mind is nothing about us without us. And it's a motto that I've used frequently in, in my life in a number of different ways, and so I hear you loud and clear. What would be other ways? Because sometimes what happens is, I think, we have delegations or communications that come to the board. It could be a brave student like yourself coming forward on behalf of other students. And sometimes I don't know if maybe that gets lost, because we're not perhaps seeing support in numbers, or we're not seeing a lot of people stepping forward. So, and I'm just surmising. But if trustees wanted to get in and, and connect with students and speak with students and really engage with students where they're at, I mean, what is, what are some good ways for us to do that? So that we can actually, like you said, hear from students directly on what is impacting them without any noise or any, anything in the middle of that? What, how, what would you suggest for that approach?
Yeah, for creating that kind of intimate dialogue with students, you need to reach straight to the source. I would suggest going to Student Senate. The student-led equity group is definitely a great option. I know there are many board-wide student-led equity groups that may not get as much time with trustees as they'd hoped for. So I know that it, it does take a little extra time, a little extra effort to reach out to students directly, but it is something that is very important, because we do have a perspective that many of you don't have anymore as students, as people being directly affected. Some things in theory are amazing, but then in action aren't, and students see that firsthand. So reaching out to those groups, especially groups like Student Senate and the, the student-led equity group are the best chance to learn firsthand from what these students, what initiatives they're running, why they're running them. There's perspective on certain board policies, certain board it, like interests, because that's the only way that we start fostering a positive discussion.
Thanks, Hubert. Sorry, sorry, trustee Agnew, sorry for cutting you off. Trustee Kat?
Sorry, I just want to say thank you.
You go.
Thank you.
Trustee Kelly, you have the floor.
Thank you. I will cede my seat to the next person in chat, because all of my questions were addressed, and great job on the delegation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Antamasi, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Great presentation, great perspective, great insight on what happens in the hallways that perhaps we're not aware of. I have one question. Are, you quoted the legislation, both provincially and our policies, or within our policies. Are you aware of any other legislation that overrides the Education Act? That would address whether or not student trustees are allowed within the context of Catholic education?
I actually have the Education Act right here. Reading through the qualifications, there is no mention of religion here. First of qualification is the person has to be, on the first day of school, after the term of office begins, he or she is enrolled in the senior division of school of the board and is A, a full-time pupil, B, an exceptional pupil in a special education program, or that's, for example, if you're like in AP or IB, so you are still full-time pupil, but it's just a shortened term. Despite subsection 1, a person is not qualified to be elected or to act as a student trustee if he or she is serving a sentence of imprisonment, imprisonment in a penal or correctional institution. A person who ceases to be qualified to act as a student trustee shall resign from the position. For, in this section, full-time pupil has the same meaning as in the most recent regulations made under Section 234 of Act ORG 7-07S.54. As you can tell by that very long-winded quote, there is no mention of religion within the Ontario Education Act, specifically about student trustees. If you do have information of that, please let me know, because this is based off of my own research, printing out the policies and reading through them to the best of my abilities. Again, I'm in grade 11. I've only taken one law course in my entire life. So if you do have any information, please send it my way.
I will do that. Trustee Antamasi, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. So thanks for the quote. The Education Act, just for information is generally written for public education, which really doesn't take into account Catholic education. We have denominational rights, which I will send you information.
Yes, trustee Guzzo, what's your point of order?
Trustee Antamasi is quoting denominational rights. This is not a debate with a student trust, a student who is delegating. Denominational rights do not trump all rights. It simply allows for Catholic education to exist, for religion to be taught, and for teachers to be hired Catholic. That's the scope of denominational rights. And it's argumentative with the delegator.
Okay, understood. I think trustee Antamasi's point was that there, there is a factor of denominational rights, and I don't believe he was entering into any debate or going any further on that matter. Trustee Antamasi, do you have a follow-up question?
All I was responding to, Mr. Chair, was the inquiry by the student asking that if there was other legislation, that I would forward it to her. So I mentioned denominational rights, because that is the legislation that would justify why we run our schools the way we do. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Antamasi. Sorry, yeah, sorry, Ms. Barakat. Please go ahead.
Yes, I understand denominational rights. It is something that I did do research on prior. It's important to notice that denominational rights aren't a barrier in this discussion, although you are entitled to create that policy because of denominational rights. It is not a barrier to revoke that policy. As we could tell from Sudbury Catholic District, District School Board, that doesn't have a requirement for their student trustees to be Catholic, as well as Huron CDSB, CDSB's school board as well. I have the, their application for Sudbury Catholic District School Boards. Essentially, their qualifications are be a full-time student at Catholic, Sudbury Catholic District School Board, a senior division in grade 11 by September 1st, provide confirmation of support from the school principal, provide confirmation of support and acknowledgement of the student trustee's responsibilities from the parent or guardian, and be willing to commit the necessary time to attend meetings and perform the duties and responsibilities of student trustees. Huron CDSB has a very long policy, but it is under, it is under subsection operations and governance, student trustees, and it was adopted in 2000. I don't know when it was revamped, but I do know that that's the subsection.
Thank you. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'll say upfront that I don't intend to spur debate in this. I want the point of clarification, which is every time this issue comes up, is, is something that, that, that sticks to my head, because what, the narrative that I keep hearing in the various delegations on this topic is that we're not giving people, our students, a voice. So, and that, if, if that's in fact what we're not doing, giving people an opportunity to express themselves, I would have a serious problem with that. Okay? So I'm, I'm immediately reminded of the three wonderful trustees we complimented tonight as being the student voice that is appointed at the table. And certainly, I have to think that they do a very good job. So there is a student voice at the table, notwithstanding the fact, the delegation such as this one, that, that we actually welcome with open arms, as we do, as we do tonight for Ms. Barakat. I'd like to make a distinction between giving a voice, which I think we do adequately, and if we don't, let's find a better way to do it, versus not getting the answer that one expects all the time. And that, unfortunately, is a reality in life. You know, you can advocate for certain things. You can make a case. But to expect a yes answer until you're satisfied is not, is not a reality either, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please state your point of order. Please state your point of order.
Mr. Chair, is that I believe that trustee De Rosa is making accusations against the delegation on her intent behind this. She's not coming here and, and saying that she's speaking to us because she's not getting her own way. That's what is coming across in this conversation. So I think that trustee De Rosa needs to take this back in a straight line, ask the question or the clarification he requires, but I don't think that this is the proper conversation. It seems like it's entering a debate to me.
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So, trust, no, trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, you know, trustee De Rosa. You know the process. There was a point of order. I'm to rule on the point of order. So my ruling on the point of order is we've given trustees a certain amount of latitude tonight who haven't asked direct questions. I believe the point trustee De Rosa was, was making was that there are avenues for, for a voice to be heard. I would expect him not to go into any further debate on that matter. And, and I would, I would assume that trustee De Rosa is looking for a response from our delegate on that.
I am.
Yeah, I'm more willing to respond to that.
Thank you.
First thing, thank you for bringing up the question. I know it is something that can be misunderstood very easily, but the issue here lies in the fact that the, the, the issues that were brought up, such as the pride flag delegation, as well as my own, were backed by essentially the entire student body. We are not saying that you are not giving us the opportunity to speak, because you are. I'm right here. And I think that the student trustees are a wonderful start to that opportunity of listening to students, correct? But notice how me and many of my non-Catholic peers are barred from that. So if you're saying that we do have student voice because student trustees, then wouldn't that limit mine? Another topic is, again, Student Senate fully backs the amendment of Policy 126. Isn't the Student Senate a direct line between our student body and the board? The pride flags, when the pride flag delegation was refused, every school on their media posted pride flags in support. That is directly the student body protesting. So to say student voice has been heard because we came here and we spoke, and then when we were refused, we didn't like the outcome. It isn't because we are upset we didn't get the answer we wanted. It is that we are upset we did not get the answer we deserved, and that our students deserve.
Thank you. I'll have to do a little order of business. We have to vote to extend. It's 10 o'clock. Can I have a motion to extend?
I'll move it.
Mr. Chair.
So it's moved by trustee O'Hearn, turn out as seconded by trustee De Rosa. Is that correct?
No, sure. Not a problem.
Okay. Trustee Antamasi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn, turn out.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guver?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
And trustee Murphy's in favor, so we're extended to ten thirty. Sorry, Ms. Barakat, I hope I didn't cut you off. Did you, did you finish your point?
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm all done for that one.
That, thank you. Trustee Kelly, you have the floor?
My question once, once again addressed, um, put very quickly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor?
Trustee Guzzo? Yep.
Oh, was it? I, you know, I gotta get that, somebody to look at that.
Getting used to it. So my question is, is, just to, again, remind me, what, what high school do you go to?
I go to Saint Francis Xavier. I'm a grade eleven student currently.
You're a grade eleven student. Okay, you're a grade eleven student. I couldn't remember what high school you're at. So your student senate's there. If you're having conversations with student senate, the student senate is different than student trustees at the board. Would you agree?
I agree. And this is because Student Senate allows non-Catholic voices, whereas student trustee positions don't allow that. In fact, I believe in this, the group of Student Senate student from Saint Francis Xavier, it is a majority non-Catholic students because, again, our school is a majority of non-Catholics.
Great, thank you for the follow-up. And, and, and just for clarifying, just so we're, just to help me understand again, we only have three student trustees sitting at the table, and we don't have a student trustee from each high school sitting at our table.
Yes, that's exactly true. Student Senate has every single school, every single high school on there discussing these issues. So it is a much more accurate perspective of what students need and want.
Thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Interesting line of questions from, are we trying to suggest that there should be one student representative per, per high school in, on the board? I don't know. I don't think that we're going in that direction. Is that the direction we're going here?
That's not the direction we're going. It was actually just to point out that Student Senate is a very accurate depiction of our student body. Student trustees are an amazing voice for students. I agree. And they obviously are a huge opportunity for students as showcase their leadership. But Student Senate, having students from each school, multiple students from each school, is just a more accurate depiction.
So may I have a follow-up clarification, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
So am I, I, I don't know if I'm reading this right. Is there a disconnect between the current process for, for choosing our representatives on the board versus the composition of the senates? Aren't, aren't the senators part of the election process of the three trustees that are currently on the board?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So it's the senators that send the current, it's the senators.
Clarify your question, please. I'm a little confused.
No, it is, I'll rephrase my question more clearly. Is it not the senators who send or elect the current trustees representing them on the board currently, the three trustees?
Yes, but is that to say that the Student Senate is not a depiction of the student body?
Okay, so, so we're, we're entering into, to debate here and we're, we're getting off track. So I'm going to try and bring this back on track. The purpose is to ask clarifying questions of the delegation. Trustee Guzzo, I see you have your hand up.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So maybe I'll, I, my question is, is if we were to compare, and I'm not trying to diminish this, our student trustees at the table, and I hope that nobody takes it as that, because I would never diminish their roles. They're very important. But if we were to do a comparison of the student body versus the Student Senate versus the student, student trustees, would we be, would you consider them similar to the parents versus school council versus the trustees sitting at the board? Would that be a fair comparison?
I, I'm not sure because I haven't really compared parent councils and, and those to the board. However, I do know both Student Senate and student trustees are very important roles. I completely agree with that. I, again, I, I've met these student trustees. They're amazing leaders, and they are a great voice for students. However, they are not the only voice for students. The Student Senate, once again, larger survey size, more accurate information. At least that's what I was taught in math class.
Trustee Guzzo, do you have a follow-up? Trustee Kelly's in the queue, so hopefully you don't steal her question. We can actually.
No, 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 I didn't steal her question, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Kelly, you have the floor?
Thank you, and through you, Chair. So Rahad, would you say that there's a disparity, disparity in representation of student voice, excluding non-Catholics specifically, seeing that many students in Halton Catholic aren't Catholic or active Catholics?
I absolutely would. As mentioned, this has been brought up in past delegations, including my own, so I will not go over that all again. However, it's important to point out non-Catholics contribute to the school board. They are shaped by the school board. They have leadership opportunities within the school boards. However, when it comes to one of the biggest leadership opportunities directly affecting the board, they are barred from it. What message does that send?
Okay, thank you. And follow-up, Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. And like you stated, many non-Catholic students already hold leadership positions and leaders in their schools, for example, student council president and vice president. And would you say that they exhibit Catholic values despite having differing religions?
I absolutely would, because as mentioned, they are shaped by this board. Again, we have to take, it is mandatory to take religion courses. We learn Catholic ethics and morals, and many of us already as leaders in this board have to have those morals and those ethics to even be able to run something like student pres, to become something like student president or student vice president.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Tomasi, you have the floor?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Rahad, you quoted, or you stated that the greater part of the population at Saint FX is non-Catholics?
Yes.
Well, our report tells us that it's sixty forty. Has something changed in the last six months? It's sixty percent Catholics and forty percent non-Catholics.
Okay, well, I actually asked for that information a couple of weeks ago from the research manager at HCDSP, and I did not get a reply. From seeing my classrooms since last year, I usually have a majority non-Catholic class, but that may just be my grade. Thank you for that information. It is still important to point out forty percent is a very big portion. It's a very big portion. That's a big part of a pot.
Thank you. So trustees, we seem to be.
Point of, but point of clarification, or point of privilege, Mr. Chair?
Yes, trustee Guzzo, what's your point of privilege?
Trustee Anne Tomasi has quoted some numbers. I don't believe we actually have those stats, so I'd like to know where they came from, especially that he's put that to our delegator.
Well, I, I, I would say that we're straying off topic. I understand your point. The, the point has been made and agreed to by our delegate that it's a significant number. I think that's, I think that's our takeaway as opposed to a percentage on, on that point. Ms. Barakat?
Yes, this is something that I've been meaning to ask, and I did email some members of the board to ask. How, I, I know that when we sign up for, like, for example, our administration sheets, we write whether we are Catholic or not. I'm curious as to where that information goes, because I, as mentioned, I have not been able to access it despite weeks of trying. Is, is that information accessible to students? If so, how, if not, why?
I don't, I can't answer that question. I don't know if Director Daley has, has an answer to that question.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I, could you just repeat when you're asked for that information, what the, what the form is?
Yes, so I went on the board website and there, I believe the title was research manager, but I can't trust my memory a hundred percent. I could definitely double-check that. And I, I emailed them asking for other statistics of Catholic to non-Catholic students, both in Saint Francis Xavier and HCDSP as a whole, and I received no reply. I have asked a student trustee about that information as well, and they do not have access to it. So I, I'm wondering i- if that is something that students have access to, or if it's something that the board even has on hand, because I have not been able to find that information.
So thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I thought, I, I thought I heard you say that you would fill out a form or you were asked. Wha- what, what form, or do you recall the form you're referring to?
Um, I, I'm not sure, but I remember when I first came to Saint Francis Xavier, my parents had to fill out a form. One, one of the forms was just like information, and a secondary form was given to non-Catholics. I, I, I don't necessarily know what it's about. Again, I was in grade nine, and it was my parents who signed it, but I do know that you do have to specify whether you are Catholic or not when you first enter a Catholic school.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. I think at the secondary level, and I, I don't want to get into the weeds too much on this. I think at the secondary level, the form may have been, the additional form might be if you're registering from, from outside of our board. So if you went to elementary school on the public board, that might be the additional information that we're looking for. In terms of, in, in terms of that kind of census sort of data, we really don't have that. One of the ways we can somewhat gauge, and it's not an exact science, but somewhat gauge percentage of Catholic versus non-Catholic is when we look at, for example, when students register in grade nine, we know how many, what percentage of students come from our Catholic schools, and most of them are Catholic in elementary, and we know what percentage of students come from the public board. Again, most of those students, not all, but most of them would be non-Catholic. So that's a bit where we can kind of gauge the rough percentages.
Thank you.
And is that the data that Mr. Anne Tomasi, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, is that the rough data that you stated to me prior?
No, can I answer that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you can answer. You were asked the question, so you can answer.
The information came to me and has been coming to me yearly from staff at the high school. I don't know how they collect the data, but that information came to me directly from them, along with superintendents.
Okay, thank you. I will definitely check in with my school administrators and let you know if I, I can get those numbers or maybe ask students to speak on that population. For me personally, I have only met a handful of Catholic students within my own classrooms. Again, it might just be my grade or past grades that have had that, because my brother also graduated from what seems to be a majority Catholic class. But I definitely think that's something that we should keep an eye on, and I'll keep an eye on it as well. I'm sorry, I speak a lot.
Thank you. I, I think the, the point is taken that, and, and it is coming down in regulation that we will be required to keep data and disaggregated data, which will help us in our decision-making, which, which unfortunately we don't have now, but I think is becoming more and more important to have. So we, we have tended to get off track. If, if trustee Guzzo, if you don't have a specific question, I, I would like to, to end the questioning.
I do have a specific question, Mr. Chair. I was just going to say that because she had, had quoted some statistics under, I think it's the Freedom of Information Act, she can actually request the information that trustee Anne Tomasi so graciously said that he seems to get directly from staff and from us.
Thank you. So we will, we will end the questionings here. I, I would like to, to thank Ms. Barakat for, for coming in and advocating. It's, it's always a pleasure. I, I enjoy it. You know, some of the, some of the takeaways, I think it's important when you mentioned, basically, what we say as trustees and how we say it is, is very important. And we need to be cognizant of, of some of those things that, that, that maybe our intent is not coming across correctly. And we've learned a lot this year, and, and we are looking at, at ways of, of connecting and getting that information flowing up. So, so thank you very much and, and keep advocating and, and we'll keep working to get better also. So thank you. We will deal with your response to delegation under agenda item eight point one.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
We're moving on to item six, approval of the minutes. The minutes of June the first, twenty twenty-one, regular board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that there are none, may I have a motion to, to move the minutes of June first, twenty twenty-one?
Trustee Agnew?
Moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by?
Brian.
Trustee O'Brien will go to a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn, turn out to?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Anne Tomasi?
Opposed, Mr. Chair.
And trustee Murphy's in favor. Motion carries. Item six point two, minutes of June third, twenty twenty-one, special board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing that.
Mr. Chair, I, I do have a question about those minutes, because we had a vote. It's on page forty-five. I was just trying to find it now. It was trustee Anne Tomasi requested to add an item to the minutes and in two instances. And so we had a vote on it, but it doesn't say what the item was. I was wondering about that, that it should include what his request was to add, because it was an actual vote.
Okay, so, sorry, Rosie, did you? Rosie had mentioned that it was defeated.
Yes, that's correct. It was defeated, but what we voted on was the topic that he asked to add. Shouldn't that be?
But then that would be incorporated in the minutes, and we specifically voted down incorporating it in the minutes.
Can I get the parliamentarians? Can I, can I get the parliamentarians' comment on that, if he's there?
Certainly, and it's, it also, it's on the video. It's on the, the recording of. So Parliotarian Kapoor, I'm not sure if you, if you spot that. So there was, I believe trustee Anne Tomasi moved a motion to include some information in the minutes. We voted on it. We, it was defeated. So trustee Carabella is now asking why it isn't included in the minutes as defeated. And my response was, well, then, then it in fact is incorporated in the minutes, and that's specifically what our vote was, was not to incorporate it. Can you, can I have your opinion on that?
The question, excuse me, Chair. Apologize for that. The question is regarding the wording of the minutes, of the motion that was put in the minutes. And it's a, it's a determination, I don't remember the, the exact words that were used formally for the motion. It was a request to add to the minutes. The exact wording is the, is as the chair. The exact wording is the, is as the chair and the secretary, and the secretary report record it. If someone wishes to change this wording, that would be an amendment to the minutes. This, there's a, there's no clear cut answer. I'm looking to see if I can find a more clear cut one, but I don't see, there is no clear cut answer in terms of the exact wording, if it wasn't a written motion.
Okay, so the reason, the reason why it was not added was because if you in fact, if the ruling specifically was not to add it, the vote was, was not to add it, therefore by recording it as being defeated, you are adding it to the minute. So, so that, that is my answer. Trustee Carebella?
So may I make an amendment?
Trustee Carebella, you want to make an addition to the, to the special board meeting minutes?
Yes, well, I think trustee Antomasi was just gonna say something, and maybe I'll wait to see what he has to say.
Trustee Antomasi, do you want the floor?
Mr. Chair, so point of order. My point of order stems from the fact that our bylaws speak to that any time a motion is put forward, it has to be recorded, because it's an action of the board as a whole, so it cannot not be part of the minutes.
Okay, so I will rule on your point of order. I will rule on your point of order. You asked for a point of order, so the chair will rule on that. So a motion wasn't put forward, it was a request to add it, which I refused, and then you appealed the decision, so there was no motion put forward.
But a vote is the same as a motion, Mr. Chair. Please ask the parliamentarian to reconsider his position on this matter. Him and I exchanged texts on the subject. He's well-versed, and I pleaded a case to him, which I believe his, his ruling, which is the ruling by which you adhere to.
Unfortunately, trustee Antomasi, the parliamentarian doesn't make rulings. He provides advice. So.
Exactly. So you acted on his advice.
Right. So we, we cannot, by definition, how can you add something? How could you record something when it was expressly denied on appeal? Then by recording it, you're actually putting it in. So that, that is my ruling.
Any action by the board, Mr. Chair, any action by the board?
Wait a moment, Mr. Chair.
Through a formal vote?
Trustee, trustee Guzzo, what's your point of order? Trustee Antomasi, you're out of order. Trustee Antomasi, you're out of order. Trustee Guzzo, what's your point of order?
You've already ruled on this?
Yes, I agree. So your point of, your point of order is well taken. We're moving on. Do we have a mover to move the minutes of Item 6.2?
I'll move.
Moved by trustee Agnew. We have a seconder?
Trustee Guzzo.
Seconded by trustee Guzzo. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
Abstaining.
Trustee Kelly?
Can you come back to me, Chair?
Yes, again, trustee Rashdi?
Abstaining.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
So what are we voting on now, Mr. Chair?
We're voting on approval of the minutes, Item 6.2.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy's in favor, so the motion passes. Moving on to Item 7.1, Summary of Outstanding Items from Previous Meeting. The chart is provided for your information. We're moving on to action items, 8-point run, response to delegations. In accordance with our bylaws and policy I 06, delegations to the board, we have four options. Trustees may move a motion to, number one, receive the delegation's information. Number two, defer the matter to a future meeting. Number three, request the staff report on this matter to be considered at a future meeting. Number four, make a decision on this matter. We are addressing the first delegation, which is 5.1, youth vaccinations. I will open up the floor to trustees who want to put a motion on the floor on how to proceed with this first delegation. First, we have trustee DeRosa.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll line up with the other one as well, but I move to accept this information.
Okay, do we have a seconder?
I can second it.
Seconded by trustee Carabella. And we'll go to recorded vote. Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi? Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy is in favor. Motion passes. Moving on to Item 5.2, Student Experience with Racism. I'll open up the floor to trustees. Trustee Carabella, you have your hand up?
Actually, okay, I will. That was for the last one, Chair Murphy.
Yeah, we have a, we have a challenge with the way we, we basically have just always gone through the queue, so I'll call, I'll have to call on trustee Carabella.
I would like to move to accept this as information.
Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Carabella. DeRosa. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Gubert?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
And trustee Murphy is opposed. The motion carries. Moving on to Item 5.3, Indigenous Equity and Human Rights. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to request a staff report in collecting data in regards to complaints and suspensions of marginalized communities within our schools.
Do we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew?
Seconded by trustee Agnew. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Come back to me, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy's in favor. It's a tie, so the motion does not carry. We'll have to open up the floor to see if there's any other decisions by trustees on this matter. Trustee DeRosa?
Forgive my, my, I don't understand what you mean by that.
So the motion that was put forward, the request for information failed. So we still, we have no action taken on this matter.
I see, so we can re-propose to take it as information? Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
I'm not suggesting anything. I'm, I'm leaving the floor open to trustees to either do one of the four actions that we can.
So I move, I move to accept that as information, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a seconder?
Seconded O'Brien.
Seconded by trustee O'Brien. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
Opposed.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy's opposed. The motion fails. Trustee O'Brien? Oh, we have to vote to extend. It's past 10:30. Where does the time go? And I have a motion to extend past 10:30.
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee, oh, sorry, was that trustee Guzzo who seconded?
No, it was trustee O'Hern. I'll second it. It's trustee Guzzo. I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you, Mr. Chair.
You know my attention span's quite short. We'll call, call a recorded vote. Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Sorry, I, in favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
About to finish the, the recorded vote. Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
Abstaining.
So we must finish the matter at hand. I believe trustee O'Brien is, is in the queue. How do you, do you wish to, to move on this item? Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Well, Mr. Chair, I am in a parliamentary dilemma, because I was going to propose the same thing as trustee DeRosa. So that being the case, I don't think I can.
Okay, so let me ask Parliamentarian Kapoor for some advice. Parliamentarian Kapoor, it seems evident to me that we will be at a stalemate on how to deal with this matter. Could you provide suggestion for moving forward?
Chair, as I read Bylaw 12, and as I read Policy 106, it's, it's not 100% clear, but it gives, it says the board may make an improvement, a, a, one of the four responses. I don't see in here a clear obligation that the board has to respond. The board may, the board may make one of four responses. A decision, a referral, a staff report, or to receive for information. It's, and you may rule that the board is not required to make a response. That, the wording is not entirely clear, so that is in your discretion. I know it's unusual in your practice as well.
Would it be appropriate to defer the matter to our next meeting?
That is one of the four responses that you can, that the board can make, yes. Is to refer it to, to the next, to the next meeting.
Okay. So trustee, trustee, what's your point of privilege, trustee O'Brien?
It's a question. That being the case, if we go to another meeting, are those two options still excluded?
No, there, if we, if we bring this to the next meeting, we, we still have the four options, which are to receive his information, defer staff report, and make a decision today. So actually, in fact, it was, I kind of, it was a stupid question now that I look at it. It says number two, defer the matter to a future meeting, is one of our options. So that's, that's up to trustees. If a trustee wants to move to defer it, we can vote on that, which we haven't done yet.
Mr. Chair?
Move to defer.
So that's okay. Too many people talking, too many people talking. So trustee Guzzo has her hand up next in the queue. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move to defer this to the, our next meeting, which is meeting tomorrow.
Trustee Agnew will second.
Okay, so moved by trustee Guzzo, seconded by trustee Agnew. We'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Our next meeting is not.
It wouldn't be on this, it wouldn't be on this special meeting. It would go to our meeting on the 24th.
That's still not a, that still would consist as an added meeting, because our business ceases when school stops. This is the last scheduled board meeting, so it would have to be deferred to September.
Parliamentarian Kapoor, could you provide your opinion on that matter? We have a, a board meeting, a special board meeting scheduled for the 24th, where the agenda has not been set yet. And my, my desire would be to move it on the agenda of that, onto that meeting, and, and the school, the school is, is still open on the 24th. Schools, the school year is not over on the 24th.
Yes, Chair. The bylaw and policy both refer to a future meeting. They do not require it to be a future regular meeting, so it could be added to a special meeting agenda. And if, as you say, the agenda of the 24th meeting hasn't been set, so a referral here could add it to the agenda of the, of the June 24th meeting.
Okay, thank you. So I will accept your, your guidance, and it would be referred to the meeting on June 24th. Trustee DeRosa, how do you vote?
Come back to me, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Antomasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata?
In favor.
Trustee Guber?
Abstaining.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy's in favor. So at this point, we've, we've exhausted our opportunities. I would rule that no decision can be made on this here today. Trustee Guzzo, you have your hand up?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
And what is your motion, trustee Guzzo?
I'd like to make a motion that we get a third party to come in to do an investigation in regards to representation of marginalized communities and complaints within our students in in our our schools.
Okay, do we have a seconder?
Trustee Agnew.
Trustee Agnew. Rosie, I'm assuming you didn't catch all of that. Trustee Guzzo, could you repeat that motion?
You know what? Let me type it out in the chat.
Okay. Okay, trustees, if you could read in the chat. Trustee Guzzo, could you read it for us?
Absolutely. Be it resolved that the Director of Education engage a third party to investigate allegations of discrimination in our schools of all marginalized groups immediately.
Okay, so we'll go to a recorded vote. Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Antamasi.
Against, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hern Trinata.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Guber.
I will abstain.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Rashdi.
I'm in favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee DeRosa.
Opposed.
And trustee Murphy's in favor. It's a tie. It's evident that there will be no majorities or decisions made on this matter tonight, so I am going to call the meeting adjourned. And trustee Carabella, you have closing prayer.
Oh, that's wonderful. Okay, so I.
I'm sorry, sorry, I don't want to interrupt your prayer. Point of order, point of privilege, whatever it is, Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
You could pick one, trustee O'Hern Trinata.
Both of them, please. How is there nothing we can do by by not answering something at all, to me, is worse than giving the wrong answer? So we're just going to ignore five point three and move on.
I agree. To me, it's not acceptable not to provide a delegate with an answer. We can we can stay on this merry-go-round all night. There there isn't. To me, there is no will for consensus, so unfortunately, I think it's we have to call the meeting based on that. It's unfortunate, but I don't I don't see any other alternative.
Thank you for the response. Very disappointing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee DeRosa.
Yes, in light in light of that statement and the unfortunate situation we find ourselves in, is it possible for me to move a simple motion that is easy to act on? That is germane to topic.
You can you can move a motion on this subject, yes.
So, Mr. Chair, I I haven't articulated, but I think it's simple enough whereby what I'd like to to do is to move that the board accepts to to do a land acknowledgement at every meeting from now on.
Point of order, that's not germane to the delegation.
It it I agree, trustee Carabella, it is not germane to the delegation. I believe that we set precedent by allowing motions that were not germane to the delegation. Parliamentary Kapor, can you provide your opinion or refresh my memory on that?
Yes, Chair, your your ruling, the the board overturned a ruling of yours that was limiting the a response to delegation to the specific points that were in the delegation, and the board therefore set a precedent that it could go beyond those those strict definitions of what is a response to delegation. It you you can again rule as that that is a that that set a precedence, and therefore this is allowed. That's your discretion. You'd want if you can if there's some connection to the to the delegation, that's your it's your discretion, Chair. So sorry if I'm too helpful, but.
Yeah, you just gave a drowning man a glass of water. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kapor. We I have ruled in in the in the past, we the the board of trustees has overturned my ruling. It's it's a judgment call on this one. I'll I'll allow it because there was an aspect of the delegation that involved indigenous equity, so we would need a seconder. I'll call for a seconder a second time. Seeing we have nobody to second the motion, the motion does not move forward. Again, one one more, please. I I ask this question. Parliamentary Kapor, it was a a question was asked of me was that since we are dealing with item eight point one, which is response to delegations, do we not have to finish all response to delegations? My opinion on the matter is that we we're dealing with, we have, our obligation is to deal with the matter at hand, which was specifically replying to delegation five point three. Therefore, it wouldn't be appropriate to move on to the next delegation. Can I have your opinion on on that?
That is my interpretation as well, Chair, of the term of the phrase, the item on the table is the is what you must complete. And previously, you have ruled, based on my advice, that that refers to whatever main motion is in front of you. Here, the item on the table appeared to be the response to that delegation, not all responses to all delegations.
Right, thank you. I'll offer up to to any trustee who was on a prevailing side if they would like to change their vote. We'll give one last opportunity to come to a some kind of resolution on this matter.
There is no prevailing side because it's a deadlock. If you have a deadlock, you can't have a prevailing side.
That's a good point. Good point, trustee. Yes, trustee, Parliamentary Kapor.
Sorry, Chair. The prevailing, the motion was defeated because of a tie vote. The prevailing side are those who voted against.
Okay, another good point. I'm learning so much tonight. Is there is there anybody on the prevailing side, so those who defeated any of the motions regarding this matter, who would reconsider their vote? I'll call for one last time, and if not, we will end the meeting and move on to the prayer.
A point of privilege, Mr. Chair, that question could also be applied to yourself.
No, I'm not changing. That's a good point. Another good point. Trustee O'Brien, I feel like tonight has been such a learning experience for me. I do not desire to change my vote. But thank you. So seeing that nobody is, we're at a stalemate, which is apparent and obvious. We will end the meeting and move on to the closing prayer by trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to bring this regular board meeting to a close, and it closes our school year almost, June fifteenth. I'd like to thank everyone who's worked so hard this whole year, staff, students, parents, trustees, all teachers. We've had a very fruitful year, and we thank our Lord, we thank our Lady, and especially Saint Joseph in this year of Saint Joseph. And I'd like to wish and pray that everyone has an absolutely wonderful and safe summer and that we all return and our grade twelve students go off to their pathways and everyone will grow in their love of God. So I will end with the most sublime prayer that came from the lips of our Lord, as he taught us. So if you join me in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, everyone. I remind trustees that we have a special board meeting tomorrow. We have a seven o'clock in-camera session, then a seven thirty special regular board meeting. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.